Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Regular Committee of the Hall meeting for March 12, 2018. Our clerk tonight will be Ms. Sheila Gurry. I want to first recognize that we're holding this meeting on the traditional territory of the Nanaimo First Nations. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Introduction of late items. Ms. Gurry.
On the addendum this evening, we are changing the name of Dawn Hubbard to Lauren Goodall for Agenda Item 13A, and they are going to provide counsel with an introduction and purposes of the new Sir Oxman Stadium Board of Directors in partnership with the City of Nanaimo. And we also are adding a scheduled recess at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does counsel have any other late items? Counselor Armstrong.
Yes, I'd please like to add Allison Evans as a late delegation regarding use of needles in public areas, etc.
Thank you. So are you suggesting she go at 9:00, Public Safety?
Yes, please.
Okay, is there a secondary? It's moved by Counselor Armstrong and seconded by Counselor Fuller. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Yocum.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to add Mr. Matthew O'Donnell regarding, I don't know what the subject could be, the tents at City Hall, I guess. Call it what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a secondary?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Armstrong. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So, seeing no further late items, I call the question with respect to the motion of the adoption of the agenda as amended. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Your worship, I just want to make a note that those added delegations get five minutes.
Five minutes. Thank you. So, the next item is for motion for the adoption of the minutes of the Regular Committee of the Hall meeting for February 26. Moved by Counselor Thorpe, seconded by Counselor Armstrong. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So, just before we get into the meat of this, where do we suggest Mr. O'Donnell goes? Ms. Gurry?
It could go under Public Safety as well, your worship, or it could be 13E under delegations, or 13F, pardon. Yeah, 13E, sorry.
13E?
Yeah.
Okay, I would suggest that perhaps counsel consider moving it to, putting it under 9B.
Yes.
It's okay? Thank you.
Okay, that's good.
All right. So, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So, Mr. O'Donnell will be 9B. Very good. So, the first item on the agenda after that, of course, is presentations. First presentation is the Fire Rescue Summary Report, and it's going to be led by Karen Frye, our Fire Chief and Director of Public Safety, to provide a summary of the 2017 Fire Rescue. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, your worship and counsel, and I'm actually just really pleased to see so many people in the audience come out to learn about the Fire Department, what we've been up to in the last year. So, thank you for that.
It's all about you.
Well, we're here to serve you, your worship. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about what we've done in the last year. As we know, the population in the City of Nanaimo through StatsCan has increased 7% over the last five years. And at the same time, Nanaimo Fire Rescue has seen an increase in calls for service of 38% over that same timeframe, and a 9.9% increase between 2016 and 2017. So continually, our calls for service are increasing at a higher rate than the population. And as counsel remembers, we saw this same kind of a report from the police a few weeks ago as well. So, you know, we're responding to and projected to probably go to over 10,000 incidents in 2018. And a little bit about our incidents, in the summer, we do see a higher call volume, but not overall. It stays pretty consistent and as well, the same consistency over day of the week. So, everybody needs the Fire Department to respond every day of the week. We don't take days off. And again, our response by time of day, traditionally, we would see the peak hours in fire rescue responses really peaking between about 4:00 and 8:00 o'clock in the late afternoon and evenings, and this is gradually starting to spread out more throughout the day with our low call volumes generally when people are still sleeping. But saying that, when people are sleeping, is the greatest risk for traumatic events as well. So, one of our 9,665 incidents we went to last year, it's not just about responding to fires, 68% were medical aid responses, and I think counsel's heard that, and that's one of the reasons why the increase in calls. We are receiving a couple more ambulance and paramedics in town, but we do act as first responders and provide a valuable response to the department or to the community. As well, many of our structure fires and fires are lower in call volume, but again, they are higher risk, low probability and higher risk for damages. Counsel a lot has talked about, and we've addressed to counsel lots about our zones and station areas. So, we have four career staff fire stations, as well as other service areas in town. We have Duke Point, Hammond Bay, Jingle Pot, and Westwood outside of our service areas. So, over the last five years, Station 1 has seen an increase of 45% to their workload, and that was over 12% even last year, an additional 400 calls. So, on the chart there, you can see Station 1 by far has the most call for service out of that fire station, as well as the lowest point being out in Duke Point, which is primarily Station 2 has seen an increase of 25% in the five years, Station 3, 30%, and Station 4, 30% as well. You can see in 2017, Hammond Bay area actually received more incidents than Station 4, and that's increasing probably due to the medical responses and the aging population. So, we all know there's an overdose crisis. We've heard about it through the media, the public, the health officers. BC Ambulance has coded us, we call it a code card 23, which they code as overdoses. Many times, we go to overdoses that aren't coded as overdoses. They may come in as a cardiac arrest, or a man-down, or seizures, or unknown. So, this is a 282% increase since 2013. And in 2017, we began tracking ourselves, what the actual outcome was, whether it was an overdose or it was a cardiac arrest, and instead of 356, we recorded 461 overdoses. And 72% of those are in Station 1's area. Our crews are trained to administer naloxone, part of our training. In 2017, we administered it 40 times at 8.7% of our overdoses. In the first two months of 2018, I know I'm supposed to be talking about 2017, but 14.2% of the time, we're administering naloxone to the overdoses we respond to. And just as a little side note as well, in the first two months of this year, January, February, we've seen a 3.5% increase in overdose calls over the same timeframe as last year. So, I know sometimes in the province, they're talking about it stabilizing. We're not seeing that here. And if the same trend continues, we will be responding to over 550 overdoses in the city next year, or this year, sorry. So, apart from the responding to calls, our crews trained over 16,000 hours in 2017. That includes safety talks, health and wellness, emergency driving, fire dynamics, officer development courses, and skills maintenance. We don't just learn hazardous materials, we have to maintain those skills monthly, So, counsel has previously set direction on a six-minute response time, trying to receive that 90% of the time, for member engine staffing, and also our 2016 to 18 service delivery And we're not making our response targets. So, in 2017, it was at 77% of the times, we arrived the first unit on scene 90% of the time. And, you know, it's staying pretty consistent in the last five years, between 80 and 77, and primarily, that could be for multiple duplicate incidents occurring at the same time and coming from a bit further to some of those incidents when we're downtown. One of the other things we hear a lot of people talking about is that fires are going down. Well, overall, fires are still going up. They may be going down per capita as our capita's increasing, and this chart demonstrates the different types of fires that we report to. So, these are our reportable fires that we report to the province on when they occur. Outdoor fires are also caused a lot of the time with burning complaint, illegal burning campfires. We're seeing more of those this year as well. Was a 22% increase over last year in the total fires. We went to 218 outdoor fires, 111 structure fires, and 37 vehicle fires. Again, reportable structure fires. So, in 2017, there were 111. So, these are fires where we have to report and do a fire investigation on. And as counsel's well aware, we've, we actually had a tragedy with three lives lost last year and 17 injuries at fires. So, our reportable residential structure fires, we also had 84. So, residential structure fires are fires that occur in people's homes. And this chart indicates the status of the smoke alarms. This is big, right? Your chance of surviving in a fire is 75% greater if you have a working smoke alarm. So, overall, in the city, last year, 32% of the fires had a working smoke alarm, and that's increasing, or 32 of the fires had a working smoke alarm. We're getting better and we're focusing on it. The service delivery plan, when we met with you last year, we said what we are going to do. We're going to target reduction in structure fires in our high-frequency areas through risk-focused prevention programs, improve survivability rates for cardiac arrests, improve public preparedness for major disasters through the delivery and pants, public education. We weren't asking for any additional resources, and I'm not about to do that this time, and later this year, we'll be doing a major review and requests going forward. Some of the key accomplishments, what we've done, we did a door-to-door smoke alarm campaign where we targeted the most at-risk communities in town, targeted 920 addresses, and we installed 130 smoke alarms and replaced 49 batteries. And apart from that door-to-door activations, when our fire crews are on scene at incidents, maybe medical-related or public assistance calls, and when the time is appropriate, they will verify if people have working smoke alarms as part of their response as well. So, we started tracking this in June of this year, so a half-year, and we installed 36 new smoke alarms at other related incidents, so at medical incidents. Our fire crews also trained all city staff in bystander CPR this year, and at Camp Courage, which was a two-day event put on in conjunction with RCMP and police, and, sorry, and fire, our staff trained the attendees in bystander CPR. Some of the other outreach our crews have done, they did 158 public relations events, which include the Fire Smart. So, when the wildfires were going on, we were up at the parks, providing fire safety information, school tours. We engaged 2,400 people there. Fire stations, tours, schools, everybody likes to come and visit the fire station, and participated in special events. And I'd just like to say that really during any of these events, our crews remain in service because being able to respond to an incident is a priority for us. We sent, whole bunch, we sent 12 firefighters to the interior for the city last year, and we submitted to the province, and I just received confirmation today that we had, through our claims, we received an extra funding of over $50,000 that went back into the city assets, and that's really for an all-found rate for the province that helps to counteract some of the depreciation on the apparatus and overtime rates for crews. Our Central Island Fire Comm, our dispatch for Regional District of Nanaimo, Couchin Valley, and City of Nanaimo, also saw a 38% increase in dispatch incidents in the last five years. They're dispatching nearly 15,000 incidents. Our department, between our fire prevention staff and our on-duty firefighters, conducted over 2,500 different types of inspections, so fire life safety inspections, code compliance inspections, hoarding inspections last year. Emergency planning is now back under the fire umbrella. It wasn't in 2017, but I'll report on what they've done. They had 25 call-outs, including 117 adult evacuees, 24 children, 15 pets, and they've done courses and trainings through all of that, as well as continuing to do public education, two to three a month. They were vital in our business continuity plan. They also had city staff and volunteers deployed to the interior wildfires, and they assisted them in Nanaimo, the ones that were brought down here as well. And they upgraded or enhanced our ham communications on the north end of Nanaimo this year. So, second to last slide for you. Some of our current pressures going forward, obviously, we're going to continue with the overdose responses. It's an issue everywhere. Nanaimo's no different than any other city. Mental health in the community, which we heard from Superintendent Miller. Occupational stress injuries for our first responders, a lot of that has to do with the types of calls and the number of calls they're going to. Our increased calls for service, maintaining our response objectives and resourcing, as always, that's expected. And our compliance through WorkSafe, obviously, regulations and everything else requiring a lot more adherence to cleaning of our gear and testing of our gear and training going And that was 2017. So, if there's any follow-up questions, I'll see if I can answer them for you.
Counselor Armstrong.
Thank you. Two questions for you, please, Chief Frye. Number one, has there been any fentanyl exposures to the fire personnel during the crisis this last two years?
There have been no exposures where we have had to self-administer, no.
Okay, thank you. Second question, when you're referring to the operational stress injuries, is there a plan in place if the numbers get too high?
So, this year, part of our strategy is we are doing resiliency training. We're participating in that in April for all of our staff. You know, it's covered under WorkSafe a lot of the times nowadays, so we are trying to provide our staff with the education and resources available for identifying the occupational stress injuries and building resiliency around that. And then as well, the city has excellent coverage through our support.
Follow-up, if I may, through you.
My question still, though, remains, though, if we do have a situation where we're down a certain number, which can happen, I'm sure, as you know, we just need something extremely bad, is there a plan for, to maintain our numbers?
At this point, we would call back and staff back at overtime.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hohn.
Thank you, through you to Chief Frye. Thank you for the presentation. Very informative. Just a couple of questions and some follow-ups. I think the first one with regards to the six-minute response time, can you tell me what areas are lacking? Because I know that you broke them down by the fire station numbers. So, who is making that target, you know, 90% of the time? Who isn't making that target? I think we got that number last year, if I wasn't mistaken, and who was close. So, I was wondering if we had that number this year as well.
So, probably the areas that are identified back on the map, I'm going to go back here quickly, so I don't have to go any slower. So, this map, the blue areas are what I identified as projected areas where we, crews should be able to meet a six-minute response time from the station. So, that's projected. As far as actual responses, it really depends on each individual response, based on time of day and where they are when the response, or when the incident comes in. The circled areas of Hammond Bay, Jingle Pot, Westwood, and Duke Point, those would not be within the first six-minute response area, but at times, if our crews are out anywhere near any of the peripherals, they may arrive there within six minutes. So, it's a case-by-case, and we're only at 78% across the city.
Okay, so we don't actually have numbers based on those areas? Because my question is, are we, how close are we to those red zones of, I know that you said you can't meet them, but it'd be good if we actually had numbers to see if we actually did meet those numbers. And then a follow-up with regards to the same question, what are our seven-minute response times at? I know that we strive for six, but what about seven? Are we, are we there at, you know, 94% of the time, 100% of the time? Do we have a goal for that?
I do not have those answers right now. I do know that we do report on arrival of a first alarm assignment, which is three engines for a structure fire within 10 minutes. We are within the performance metrics for that standard. I can always report back on the seven-minute response time.
Great, thank you, because it was just a follow-up that six minutes was something that is not a standard, it's just something that counsel wished.
NFPA has a standard of six-minute response under 1721.
Okay, so do most municipalities shoot for that target as well?
Correct.
How do we compare it to those municipalities?
Well, I can't speak for any of the other municipalities at this point in time, but we could always do a comparison, see where others are standing on it.
That would be great. And then just to follow up on, this is another question that I have with regards to the, when counsel made the decision to go with four members per engine, I thought we did that to try to reduce overtime. That was what we were told from the fire chief. So, have we achieved any of that by saving money on overtime?
I don't believe that you would reduce any overtime by having a minimum staffing of 16 or four member engines. So, I'm unsure as to that. I think that might have been, I believe they thought it was going to cost an extra $75,000 a year.
Yeah, I think the conversation was, I just wanted to update Chair Armstrong, or Counsel Armstrong, that it was the reason we did it, what we're told, was it would reduce overtime. So, maybe I'll get the city clerk to look at some of that information. And then last question, I know that municipalities and fire departments throughout the country actually charge the insurance companies for calls, so we get reimbursed, so it doesn't fall on the city. Do we have a mechanism, or can we do that, and charge insurance companies for calls for fire services?
So, you are exactly correct. Many municipalities and through insurance, if there is a fire, you can charge back for a fire investigation fee.
And do we do that?
We currently do not do that, but we will be looking at that when we update our bylaw and present it to counsel.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. Through you to Chief Frye. Thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you also to the work that you and your crews do. I think our community is very well-served, and we appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions. One, Counselor Armstrong, I think partially asked, it had to do with the occupational stress injuries. I just simply wanted to know if you've noticed a marked increase in those, in the last couple of years, or since your tenure began even? Is that something which is an increasing problem?
Correct. It's not only here, it's across North America right now, and we're seeing it not only in firefighters, but also in police and paramedics across the country. And I know there is federal legislation that is going forward with that as well.
And, thank you. And secondly, the increase in incidents over the past five years, you indicated 38%, and I'm assuming that that includes both health-related and fire incidents. Is one increasing more than the other? Is it more of a health incident increase due to the drug problems?
Correct. The majority of the increase, since 68% of our calls are medical-related, are any changes to the increase in first responder calls primarily. Fire calls, while they are increasing, they are not increasing at the same level as what the medical responses are.
Okay, thank you. And if I may, one more, Chair. I really appreciate the proactive work that the department does in terms of education in the community, being at events, and also the smoke alarm checking. And I think I mentioned this to you once before casually, Chief Frye, but I had a conversation with somebody who had been in California, in a community where they had a bylaw which required that any time a property was listed and sold, there had to be an inspection and there had to be a working smoke alarm in that unit or that residence. And that would require bylaw and so on, but I'm just wondering if you think that's something that we could look at if we wish to in this community?
Most definitely. I know provincially, I sat on a committee a few years ago on working smoke alarms, and we were trying to work with the Real Estate Board of BC to include that as one of their requirements in checklist, but it is definitely something we would be able to look at here as well.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I had a question for you, and that is, I attended an event, a conference, a one-day conference here in Nanaimo for first responders that was held in this building, actually, and it was really quite frightening to see, for me anyway, the number of fire personnel and police who were terribly disturbed in Vancouver with the number of calls they were getting. And I know it's different all over, but one of the things that they were suggesting in Vancouver is that because of the, because of all the calls downtown east side, that as their day progressed, backfill started to follow in behind it. And they were suggesting that if you found yourself with an incident at the perimeter of the community, you better look out because your response time is going to be significantly sacrificed by the fact that everybody's backfilling. For the benefit of the public, can you help me understand what our backfill for Station 1 is? How that works?
Yes, so prior to me becoming the fire chief, if we had extra staffing, sometimes we have 16 on duty, but sometimes we have 18 or 19 or even more, any additional staffing was stationed at Station 2. And as you saw earlier on- was stationed at Station 2. And as you saw earlier on this slide, Station 2 only responds to, well, not only, but does respond to just over 2,000 incidents a year. So having a second apparatus run out of that station really doesn't have the same value as having it out of Station 1. So when we do have extra staffing, they are now staffed out of Station 1, and we can run two units out of Station 1. So a two-member rescue unit, which is the first one out to medical type of incidents, and then be backed up by the career four-member engine. Apart from that, if Engine 1 is tied up, we have collapsing it from Station 4 and Station 2 to get the other calls.
Thank you very much. Counselor Armstrong.
Thank you. I just wanted, just, I just was thinking about it. Some in the audience may not know what an operational stress injury is, and that's the mental health and mental wellbeing. So just wanted to clarify that in case people were wondering what we were talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no further questions for you. Thank you very much for your presentation. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Animo Youth Advisory Council, Mr. Michael Ribcik. Thank you. Chair of the Animo Youth Advisory Council to provide a presentation regarding transit issues affecting youth. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Your Lordship and councilors. So just to go over a few things here. For those of you that don't know, the Animo Youth Advisory Council was established in 2014 as the mayor's youth advisory council. Members are between the age of 15 to 24 with one council representative, which is Counselor Hong. And so this year is our first year with a strategic priorities, so a plan. And what we have is, we have youth poverty, event participation, and transportation as our main issues. So with transportation, that's probably been one of our main focuses as of late. We do our best to stay engaged with transit issues by attending open houses and whatnot from the RDN and PC Transit. So at our regular meeting this past month, on February 21st, we invited representatives from School District 68, from all the, all the high schools in the Animo area, from their student council reps. And we also invited the Animo Aboriginal Center Youth Advisory Council and Vancouver Island University Students Union to discuss what their priorities would be for improving public transportation from a youth perspective kind of thing. So from this input, we've identified three priority areas for suggested improvement. So increased bus frequency and capacity. So more buses are needed at high schools during peak after-school hours. Better connections required between the most popular bus routes and buses that service high schools should be scheduled to provide a reasonable amount of time between the end of class and when the bus departs. So for example, if your school is ending at 3:05, or sorry, ends at 3 o'clock, and the bus comes at 3:05, how many of their students are actually ready to go on that bus? Probably not too many. And that seems to be a problem. That's been occurring. The most frequently cited routes for more service are the number 40 and the number 15. So that's kind of the NDSS. And number 50 and number 7, which affect a lot of people that go to Barsby. So every issue that came up was safety at bus stops. NDSS students reported feeling unsafe during loading and unloading as the overcrowding issue has led to people being pushed out into the street. It's a really evident thing. Every time you drive by there around the 3 o'clock timeframe, it's probably due to the woodland secondary closing. There's more students down there and more people taking transit in that area. There's also insufficient lighting at some bus stops. So this came up a few times as well. So students reported that buses sometimes did not stop because they were not seen, then waiting an hour plus or more for the next bus. They also felt a little bit unsafe in some scenarios if there's just no lighting at a bus stop. So another thing we have is suggestions for modified routes. So extended bus services to 10th Street, this came up surprisingly several times, and it's actually part of the RDN's future plans. So we would encourage that to be a priority. Consider expanding connections between BIU and John Barsby High School and the rest of the South End. So for example, east-west on 7th Street. And consider expanded services in areas of northern Animo with very limited service, for example, Lynnley Valley, which really has no services in that area. So we bring forth a requested motion, and that motion is that council support the Animo Youth Advisory Council attending the regional district of the Animo Transit Select Committee for the purpose of presenting identified priorities of youth for public transportation improvements.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? I have one for you, and that was, did you cover at all holiday bus service?
Holiday bus services?
Holiday bus service. And the reason I ask that is because some of the retail outlets such as Canadian Tire, they are open on holidays, and they have great difficulty getting their staff to and from work. And younger people actually miss shifts because they don't, there's no bus service.
Right. That did come up, I believe, at least once. And it wasn't necessarily identified as one of the main three, but it's definitely, it is a problem for sure, because a lot of places are only, you know, they'll be open two less hours instead, which isn't really a big difference. So with the transit lacking on those days, it does create a problem. I wouldn't necessarily say it's the hugest or the biggest problem, but it definitely is one that was identified as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Thorpe has a question for you.
Yes, quickly, thank you, Chair. Thank you very much, Michael, for the work that your group has done on this. And I'll certainly support your suggested motion. I was going to ask if you intended to go to the RDN. I was speaking last week with an exchange high school student from Hungary who was here and thought, rather naively, that he could bicycle everywhere, as he did in his home country, and quickly found out when he went to go up Turner Road or Uplands Hill, that he better get a bus pass. And he did that and used it a lot during his stay here. So I think transportation is very important to young people and school-age students. And so it's a lens that we need to be well aware of. So again, thank you for your work, and if I can forward your motion, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, as you said, so we will be presenting to the B.C. Transit Select Committee. We're also meeting with someone from the RDN this Friday as well, a staff member from there. And so yeah, we are trying to coordinate the best we can.
Good.
Thank you. Counselor Yocum.
Thank you. I was just wondering, when one should make that motion, after the delegation?
Yes.
First of all, thank you, Michael, for always championing and presenting. It's one of the states that has been, back in the day in high school and junior high, I was back in the era of junior highs, and the best experience as growing up, we're riding the bus. So we got to make it better for these students. You should have seen the bus route from Barsby down through the rez every day. It was a big auto-controlled mayhem scene, but it was fun. So definitely in support of the bus route. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Counselor Hong.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael, for presenting. I know it was an interesting discussion when we had this. With, if anybody drives by Wicca Saya when NDSS lets out, it's really dangerous. I'm happy that the city put in the sidewalks, but they're not wide enough. What do you think the option should be to actually make that part of the road safer? Railings, or do you think extension of the sidewalk? Did you guys figure that out?
Yeah, I believe that putting railings, that crossed my mind as well. We kind of discussed that. But at the same time, it could also be a bit of a burden, a bit of a hassle. I think it'd be more appropriate to perhaps somehow cement a bit more, because I'm pretty sure there's, that's city property just behind the bus stop as well. So perhaps adding a bit more of a widen sidewalk would be the more appropriate route to go. It's definitely worth exploring through the city's lens there and just seeing what they can kind of do to coordinate that. I mean, obviously, it's difficult to get people to line up formally as well, but something needs to kind of be done with that as well. And I say maybe if it was widened, it would encourage people to kind of stay more this way than it would going that way onto the road or whatnot.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would suggest we wait for other business, for any motions arising. Counselor Armstrong.
Just a question on what you just finished saying there. Have you approached School District 68 on this as well, since they obviously have a stake in it? And I believe part of that property would belong to School District 68?
Not yet. That is a great suggestion, though, as well. And we were recently informed about that idea, too. So we do, I think we will be approaching them as well. The one problem, though, with the particular bus stop, though, is it's across the street from NDSS, like at that school in particular. So I don't, I just don't think that the school district owns that part of it. However, perhaps there's ways to get around something with them, with their efforts. Or at least they can maybe try to coordinate someone to help keep people more safe there as well.
Thank you. I see no further questions. Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is under nine, and that's the first one, there's two delegations. First one is Allison Evans. Is Ms. Evans here? Thank you. So we'll need your name and address, please, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Allison. I live in Animo. I'd rather not give my address on here.
Go ahead.
So some of you may remember me from a previous delegation in regards to a needle incident with my nine-year-old daughter at Comox Park. I'm here today and joined by several people who represent many parents from our school community to speak about the city-owned Comox Park that is used by our school, A. Cole Pauline Herr, as their playground. Many people do not realize that Pauline Herr has the unique situation of having a city-owned park as their playground. This leads us to having the unique problem of funding needing to come from the city as well as the school board. First, I would like to say, start by saying that we are not against helping our city's homeless, drug-addicted, or transient population, much to the opposite. I also believe that, in my opinion, the root of our situation at Comox Park isn't people sleeping in the area, but the trouble is more with the severely drug-addicted who are not in their normal frame of mind. I would love to see more programs and care for the city of our people, for the people of our city, who are looking to improve their lives and are struggling because of the lack of affordable housing and lack of mental health care. It is a situation that demands compassion from the public, and I am extremely open to finding ways to help. I just don't, do not think that this type of help or tolerance should happen on properties that are used by children on an ongoing basis. While we don't want to just move people along without helping them, there must be some areas of sanctuary for children. A playground should be for playing and learning and carefree fun with friends and enjoying the outdoors. This should be a right for children, and while we need to protect the rights of adults who need our voices as well, we cannot forget that we also need to be the voice for the children who have barely started out their journey in growing and learning about the world. I wish that I was here today asking for some of the things that we would like to see happen on the property at Comox Park. Things like a new surface to replace the wood chips under the play structures, fencing off the property of the Scout Hut, where the city spends a fortune maintaining a property that I have been told isn't even theirs, and upgrading lighting, to name a few. But there are two basic things happening that require ongoing attention and have proven to be highly effective over the last couple of months that are at risk of being dialed back. And they need to continue. So instead of asking for the many things that we feel would ensure safety in the playground, we are here asking for some of the basics to just continue. One, we understand that the current nightly security patrols at A. Cole Pauline Herr and Comox Park are at risk of being cut because the school board no longer has the funds and has taken on the brunt of the responsibility. The city has piggybacked off the school board in paying a small portion of the security costs to add on a patrol of Comox Park at the same time as when they patrol the school property. Everyone agrees that there has been an infinite improvement in reducing the amounts of paraphernalia, feces, vomit, condoms, needles, and garbage that need to be cleaned up each morning before 200-plus children aged 4 to 12 come to class to learn. These patrols and the coordination with the school board simply need to continue. We request city council to continue this essential funding. Two, morning sweeps of the grounds. We were told last week by the parks manager that the highly successful morning cleanup routine will be dialed back during the spring season as staff need to attend to spring gardening until the end of June. The nightly security makes these morning sweeps very efficient, but they are still necessary. These sweeps include picking up much more than just needles. We request that funding for morning sweeps continue at the city-owned by, the city-owned Comox Park to ensure the safety of these children. If you do not address these issues, we will find our city-owned park playground back in complete disarray. There are real dangers with a lack of attention to this issue, dangers that affect children. And the last time I was here, I heard a lot about the fact that housing was a major factor in moving forward and helping people. I know that city council was put in a tough predicament regarding the Chase River housing units, but if you're going to turn away solutions, then you need to be prepared to step up and make a difference in the ramifications of leaving the homeless and drug-addicted out on the street. I wish that I could come here and have some great ideas on how to be compassionate and help people. It is something I live my life trying to always do, but this problem is huge and the solutions are multifaceted and will take time. The fact of the matter is that in the meantime, we need to protect our children, and these two requests will go a long way in doing so.
Thank you. Any questions for the delegation? Counselor Armstrong?
Just thank you for your presentation once again. I know that you presented also at Public Safety. We are going to make one of this, this one of our issues in our strategic plan. It is coming up. I have confirmed with city staff that that's correct, that the needle sweep will not be happening every day due to capacity issues, that they are going to have to be doing, you know, mowing, et cetera. I spoke briefly with our bylaws today, and we have a couple ideas that we're going to look at, that we want to bring to public safety, and then it will come back to council. So there are a couple of things that we are trying to look at. So I know, and you're right, it is going to take some time. Funding is a huge issue, and that's something we have to look at.
But in the meantime, we've got kids going to school every single day. So what are we going to do between now and then?
Yeah, that's something that's going to have to come to council, and we'll have to make some decisions. Thank you.
With all due respect, this is my second time here, second time at a public safety committee meeting, and I don't know how much longer, like, we're going to allow the kids to be put in this situation.
Follow-up? One of the concerns, like we said, we have been paying for helping out pay. School district is in the same as we are. There's just no money. So we have to start looking at where we can find money, and which means we cut out other priorities as well. So we're going to have to really sit down and look at that. I do know that we are at a capacity issue. We, I don't know if people are aware that we do only have 11 bylaw officers from the entire city. So again, that, they need to prioritize where they are, what they're doing.
So you're saying that making sure that there's gardens and flowers comes above cleaning up needles and feces?
Well, part of the problem with that is if we don't do that, then that becomes a hazard as well from fires. Again, then the stuff stays there hidden. We're going to, so it's a huge, complex issue that it's going to take a lot longer to solve than just around this table. And we're going to need some more support from the province and the federal government as well.
So back in January, that was your answer to me as well, and it's March.
Yeah, it's probably going to keep being my answer until we can find dollars. Like, that's part of the big problem.
So how do we go about finding those dollars, then?
I'm going to open up-
Because it doesn't seem to be happening.
I mean, we have competing priorities on that. It's the same thing, the downtown business people want to continue their securities plan. Like, it's, it's not just this area, it's all over.
The downtown business area isn't, doesn't have children in kindergarten to grade seven trying to just go to school and learn. So the priority, I think, needs to be on these kids.
Thank you. I'll let some of my other counselors speak.
Counselor Beswick.
Thank you. Thank you for coming again and addressing council. Through the chair, will staff be joining us to respond to any questions once the delegation leaves the podium?
I would suggest we bring that up under the other business.
Thank you. You made a couple of statements, and I'd just like to address them. You indicated that the school district has advised you that they are dialing back on the nightly security. Is that, is that confirmed?
It's been told to me that they don't have any more funding. They've put a lot of money into other aspects of the school security and things as well. So, you know, but what I'm here mainly for is dealing with Comox Park. I don't want to confuse the issue by talking about the actual school grounds and the school board, because they have done a lot in respect to the school. It's Comox Park that I'm here more mainly about. So if the school board doesn't continue with the security of the school, will you continue with the security at the playground, at the Comox Park? will you continue with the security at the playground, at the Comox Park?
Thank you for that clarification. My second question, if I may, was you also indicated that the city has advised you that the morning sweep
Yes, and Cheryl just confirmed that as well.
Program will be dialed back, so-
In order to do gardening?
Yeah, I'm not privy to or aware of what the repriorization of the resources.
I am. That's what, that's what they've said.
So I'm just trying, that's what I'm trying to do, is just clarify what dialing back is in the evenings by the school board from a security perspective, what dialing back is from the Parks Department on the morning sweeps. I heard bylaw enforcement come up as only having 11, but I don't believe that bylaw enforcement, to my knowledge, is a part of the sweep or of the cleanup or going out and, and cleaning. They may be, but I don't, I don't know that they are. So at the end of the day, repriorization of what can be done with a joint use, because we do have, to my knowledge, a joint use committee made up of staff members from the school board and the city. And I don't have any reports or notes from any of those most recent meetings since you were here last to be able to adequately provide any more information than you already have. You have probably more information right now about what may happen than I have.
That's the problem.
So, yes, and I don't, I don't disagree with, with you, and that's what, again, that's why I'm asking the questions in the manner in which I am. And I don't know what amount of money is necessary between the two principal organizations, the school board and the city.
How about, how about though, like, without thinking about the school board? Because I know that's like a go-to that you guys do, so how about without, without anything to do with the school board? Let's talk about Comox Park and what the city is going to do for Comox Park.
Right, and if I, if you allow me to finish. So I, I'm not clear on what the amount of monies is required to maintain and continue the, the sweep that we're doing, how we might be able to complement the lack of monies that are available through the school board to do the security in the evenings that you would wish for us to undertake, potentially, or portions thereof. So I don't have that information. And without that information, we can talk and talk and talk, and we're going to have another committee meeting, and we're going to do another one of those, and we're going to do this, and we're going to do that.
So how do we get to the bottom of that, then?
Um, I, so, so just a moment, Counselor. The clerk wishes to step in.
Thank you, Worship, and thank you, Counselor Beswick, just to cut in. Just, I just wanted to remind the delegation and council that it's not to be a debate right now. My other understanding is that the Public Safety Committee, the staff liaison, will be working on a report with recommendations to bring to council. So you will have the information that you're looking for, because you're right, you don't have the information that she's speaking of or all of the answers on priorities or where this is at, and that needs to be brought to council's table so that you can make an informed decision. But I just ultimately wanted, when a delegation is here, it's not supposed to get into a debate, so you're supposed to answer the questions, but not really argue. So, thank you.
Yep. If I might, I, if I had the floor. I, I'm certainly not arguing whatsoever with the delegation. I'm simply trying to extract the information by which that I might be in a better position to provide an adequate response, if and or when the time comes, to move and advance this matter forward. So there, under no circumstances am I arguing with the delegation. In fact, I'm agreeing with the delegation. I'm trying to support the delegation's requests for how we as a city may be able to administer the playground adequately to meet the needs of the 200-plus kids that are there and the parents and so on and so forth, and how we might be able to direct staff in order to achieve that outcome. And without the information to know if we need 5,000, 10,000, 25,000, or whatever that number is, because at the end of the day, it all comes down to money. So I am not arguing. I'm trying to find a manner in which we could potentially find a resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Fuller?
You mentioned that with the security of the playground area, that numbers of people frequenting it have decreased?
There's been, from what I know, I have gone, I've spoken to this, that all parties involved, including people that are sleeping there and footprint security and everybody else. And pretty much everyone agrees that it has decreased significantly and significantly decreased the amount of what is needing to be cleaned up, although it still is, it is still needing to have some cleanup, but it's much, much less than it was prior to the security.
Okay, that, you, you had mentioned earlier the problem wasn't people sleeping there, so I didn't even bring that part up. Through you to Mr. Britton, and this could answer a question, because what generally happens when you see a decrease of numbers there, those people are moving elsewhere. So just through the merit to Mr. Britton, have you noticed an increase in anything down at Mafia Sutton Park, which would be the next more, most frequently park area type of thing?
Sorry, this one.
We got you covered.
There's a reason I'm asking. First time.
There's a reason I'm asking.
No, Mafia Sutton Park has its issues unto itself. A lot of the, a lot of the transients go, well, there, there's 10 hotspots that we generally look at overall that we're finding needles on a consistent basis in. Pauline Herrer has been addressed a lot because of the fact that it's a school next to a playground, and we've done a lot of work to try and mitigate the factors there. Has it worked? Obviously not. It's worked to a point. They're dispersing, those are dispersing, they're going all over the place. I don't have a clear direction of where they are going, so.
Thank you. And that, and that's part of the problem. We don't have those clear understanding. The clear understanding is that this is a huge problem throughout the city. Pauline Herrer is one place. Deverell Park in the South End was frequently mentioned prior to Pauline Herrer. That park is used so frequently now that there's less and less traffic in that area. And, and part of the problem, yes, is homeless, the homeless, not, not having housing. But that's just part of the problem. Did you, did you know that there have only been five detox beds put up on Vancouver Island in the last four years? That's five, which, which helps.
And I understand that. There's also housing that's being turned away.
Well, no, the housing wasn't turned away. The housing did not get turned away.
However, that came about.
Okay, we're getting off track here, so we can just finish this up.
It's all about communication with people and how we communicate, and that goes to the back and forth with yourself. So there's a lot of misinformation out there on a lot of stuff, and hopefully John Howard Society does some cleanups. Maybe a phone call to them and ask, asking them if they would be able to shift their areas of doing it to maybe doing the, the playground area first instead of last, if that's the way they do it. Because I know they're out there almost on a daily basis doing that, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Yocum?
Thank you. Just quickly, uh, thank you again, and I totally sympathize. And when we get this report, I'm definitely in favor of if we've got to reprioritize, I hear you. If we've got to reprioritize of the children's, whether it's this park or any park, we've got to do sweeps. And I look forward to that conversation because we've got to, and I agree. I'd rather have needle-free fields for kids to tear around in than pretty flowers. I totally get that. So I just want to share my, my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. So ladies and gentlemen, I need to remind you, this is a business meeting. Ma'am, thank you very much. I see no further questions for you. So the next delegation is Mr. Matthew O'Donnell.
Good evening. My name is Matthew O'Donnell. I'm joined here by some members of the community. They'll introduce themselves in a couple of seconds. We're just here to address council today, in case you're not aware. We are a group of citizens who have decided, with the homeless community, in light of what the news of last week, where $7 million, basically, you know, we turned down the spot in Chase River for whatever reason, $7 million went to another community, fair enough. We've decided that we, as a community, need to come together, and we need to do something about this issue, or at least bring it to the forefront. And so we set up a tent city in, in, right in the front lawn of City Hall. This issue has been affecting multiple communities, and it's been affecting our front lawns and our backyards for, for quite some time. So we're bringing the issue now to City Council's front lawn. We're asking for urgent action on, on these issues. A couple of points that we made, for example, $7 million, that site in Chase River, it was rejected for whatever reason. We, we've been there. We've talked about that. So now we need to look at a new location. We need to find a new location. We've been hearing a lot about second rounds of funding coming from the province. We, we want to know, you know, when we can get in on that funding. When, when will that process start? And we would like actual, specific answers with, with, hopefully timelines as well. Another concern that we, we had, you know, at the, the safe injection site on Wesley Street, right now it allows for safe injection of drugs. However, overdoses and overdose deaths are happening due to snorting and, you know, inhaling as well. So with that said, we need a VHA-approved safe consumption site. And that can only happen if they have a permanent location. This is where City Council comes into play. We, we, we need council to move now on, on making sure that that is available for the people who need it in this community. Another thing that we really need, that this community really needs, is a drop-in center, somewhere where they can go or they can put their belongings. Great start with opening up those showers, but, you know, where, maybe they can, a storage area for them to put their stuff, or just to sit down and know that they're welcomed and they're a part of the community. And those are basically what we're looking for now, and I won't waste any more time, and I'll introduce these people here.
Good evening, council, your worship. My name's Kevin Donahue. I work for an organization called SOLID, which is a society of living intravenous drug users. We have groups of volunteers in the community who identify as drug users and people with lived experience, going out and cleaning up the community, doing needle exchange, distributing harm reduction supplies, both in the morning and the evenings, three times a week. It's a pilot project, and I guess right now, too, I'm hoping that we might be able to kind of pitch the idea, too, to City Council that for the idea of the needle cleanup issues, this is something that, you know, we'd be interested in working on with you. But to the point about the housing issue, you know, homelessness and people in Nanaimo who are homeless come up as an issue almost all the time at these council meetings, the issue of homelessness. Well, the solution to the problem that, that City Council identifies as homelessness is, is housing, right? And, and the ball was really dropped on the Chase River supportive housing project. So as, as Matt has said here, too, we're hoping that, that this action at City Hall today will result in bringing it back to the, the drawing board again and making it one of the top priority issues for the city. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks. So just to wrap it up here quickly, we're, we're, basically what we're asking for, for the city councils to finally, let, let's see some action, please, not just talking, let's see some commitments, and hopefully we can get some movement happening here. What you're seeing in the front lawn of City Hall is a very, very small percentage of a massive issue that's happening here in Nanaimo. We have a homeless crisis here. We have a opiate crisis here. And, you know, while they are two separate issues, they are very much connected, and they are, they very well affect each other, as well as mental health. They're all connected. So please, let's, let's just find some action here, and let's actually do something and give this community, the homeless community, something that they can be confident in with, with this council. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you go away, we've got some questions. Mr. O'Donnell, Matthew, we've got questions for you.
Counselor Fuller? Just curious, you mentioned an overdose protection site, which we already have. They want a safe injection site. Are you advocating for only one in the community?
I'm, I'm, personally, I would be advocating for as many safe consumption sites as we need to make sure that people aren't overdosing and dying.
Thank you. Thank you. Someone that agrees with-
We could have a volunteer run, too.
Pure run site, like a pure overdose prevention site is key. Like, the, the whole, you know, service provision model, like, it needs to be flipped on its head.
Yeah, no, I, no, I hear you. I'd love to see a lot of things flipped on their head. With regards to the modular housing, what we lost was the modular housing valued at $7 million. It's a great initiative, and I believe there will be a second round, and hopefully we will get it again. Because I watched a thing about a place in London where they're putting this, and it's going to be moved in five years. So you could actually move that five times. It's great stuff, and hopefully we will get there. We do have an affordable housing strategy that we're working on, comprehensible, because it's not just the homeless, it's people with low-income wage, wages that are hugely at risk of homeless. The site out at Chase River would have housed 44 people, six of them. I'm just getting back and forth. Six of them would have been the most hard to house, only six of them. Others, we were hoping to get out of some of the supportive housing buildings and move them into that housing. And then that would have opened up spaces to bring other people into as well. So it's, it's, the whole housing continuum is, it's huge. It's not just Nanaimo. It's all over the place. Why we were only given till the end of 2018, I don't know, because other communities have been given till the end of 2019. So let's get on the province as well. It's not just municipalities. It's the province and the feds. There is work happening with regards to a drop-in center through the Coalition on Homelessness. They're looking at options for that right now, so hopefully we'll get there. Thank you kindly.
Counselor Hall?
Thank you. Just, I guess, a couple of questions and a couple of comments. You mentioned that the needle, you have a needle cleanup program. So I know that we have parents here from Pauline Herrer, which is probably the first that they've heard that there is an organization that is willing to do a needle cleanup program. So my question to you is, are you willing to work with Parks, and Parks and Rec, I guess, is who is in charge, to help with cleanups of schools and parks like Pauline Herrer? Is that what you're offering to us tonight?
A contingent upon our ability to, to fund that program. Right now, we're operating on a $10,000 budget for a three-month pilot project.
And, and what are you doing, like, I'd like some more information about that, actually, like, $10,000 for three months. What have you done with that, or what area have you focused on, and how many needles have you picked up? I guess some information would be great. And then to connect with our staff, and the safety chair, I guess, is where it would logically go, to help Pauline Herrer for, if our Parks Department are good and we can fund this from our housing issue, we can get you guys to do the needle cleanups, and that would alleviate a lot of the issues that Pauline Herrer has come to us and asked for. Is that correct?
I think that's true, yeah. It seems like a pretty, yeah, logical assumption to make. But I think bringing it back to the housing thing is incredibly important. You know, when we're talking about the issue of, you know, needle exchange and needle cleanup, that's definitely going to be an issue. It's going to be an ongoing issue. While, while people are using drugs intravenously, there's going to be syringes in our community to a certain degree. The, the fact is, is that by providing people with housing, well, A, it's a step towards people being able to, to address addiction in their own lives as individuals, correct? Like, housing is a, is a, is an integral first step to people being able to address other issues in their life. And, and people who are using drugs in the streets of Nanaimo, they're not doing it because they want to. They're doing it because they have no choice. They have nowhere else to use them. And what people do in the privacy of their homes is none of our business. So if people choose to use drugs intravenously in the privacy of their homes, that's, that's their right to do so. But if we don't want to, if we don't want to see people using needles in Mafia Sutton Park or, or, you know, near the grounds of Pauline Herrer, we do need to provide them with housing. I think that that's, that's really the key issue, though.
Okay, but in the meantime, that you guys can, which is, which is great. I think the Pauline Herrer parents here would be happy to hear that. And then Matt, with regards to what you said, you said you had support from the homeless people with regards to set up this tent. Are there any homeless people up there right now at City Hall?
Absolutely.
Because I just saw one at A and B Sound sleeping there. It's like, wow, why isn't that person up at City Hall when you guys set up a tent there?
Yeah, I tried, I actually woke her up and told her that she should go up there.
Yeah.
But I guess she's just really tired, but yeah, we're all up there.
Okay.
We've been there since this morning and, yeah, just see if we can make a difference or something.
Yeah, thank you. I was just, I wasn't exactly sure as I just was coming to this meeting, that woman's like sleeping outside of A and B Sound. It's like, wow, I could just go up some tents.
Yeah, I was gonna go after this and go down around the library, I seen a few people, too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Beswick.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Matt and company. I think we first met under a certain circumstance similar to this several years ago. I have much respect for the, what you do. And I just have a couple of comments and a question. Social entrepreneurship, so that's basically what I've heard, that you're acting in a social entrepreneurial way with the funding that you've received to provide a needle cleanup within the city of Anamo in certain, specific areas. And I just have to ask the question, if you have had any dialogue with our city staff in relation to complementing what we've been doing and complementing what you are doing? Has there been any integration between yourselves and our city staffs? Have you crossed paths saying, hey, what are you doing? Who are you? Who, are you, do you guys just good citizens? Like, thanks for coming. Have you guys talked?
We have not. There has not been a discussion that's been initiated yet between city staff and this pure-run project. It has, it's been operational for about, just over five weeks now.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, we're kind of, we're in the process of having those discussions, hopefully, or kind of trying to figure out how to do it. I assume, like, what this is, is essentially an opportunity to begin those discussions.
Thank you. So I'm assuming that this is a pilot project, as you indicated, and that once the three months of funding comes and goes, you will either be going back to that organization that's been funding you because you've been extremely successful, or there's more money there, or whatever. And in the meantime, I hope that you can connect with our staff so that we aren't becoming redundant, that we aren't doing same or similar places where there's need in elsewhere, so we get the best value, just, so we get the best value, so that you aren't wasting your time, and our staff might be able to work with you guys to say, here's the schedule, here's how we're doing what we're doing, and the hours that we're doing it, and to the delegation previously to you.
I'd be happy to have those discussions, and, you know, I'd just set a later date, because I do not want to downplay the importance of the action that's happening at City Hall today on the lawn. I really think the focus does have to be on the housing, and I'm not trying to be rude or anything like that, because I would love to have those discussions. The needle exchange program and working with the city is very important to me, but I don't want to hijack the opportunity to really, you know, to put the importance on the issue.
Thank you. And again, I'll go back to what I had on the last conversation. I'm not arguing with anybody. This is a COW meeting. This is a committee of the whole meeting, where it used to be a little less formal, and we could have these conversations and say, hey, you need to talk to that guy right over there, and that guy right over there has got to talk to you, and you guys can't work in silos, not that you're intending to. We have to work together, because one organization, one group, one city, isn't going to solve this problem all by itself. So if everybody isn't talking, if everybody isn't working together, and we recognize that there's various layers of the problem, of which one is housing, I completely understand that. And so I'll get to my question about housing. How long do you intend, Matt, to have the awareness program on our front lawn?
Essentially, until we see action and movement on the requests that we have made. Hopefully, that can happen relatively quickly, but at the same time, we do need some, we need to know that we're moving in the right direction at a very urgent pace. And as soon as we have that, we can talk with our people, and I'm sure we can come up with some sort of resolution.
And just then finally, you've seen-
But we need movement first.
You've seen government at work. You've seen January, the gal came from Pauline Herr, and here we are in March, and we're going back to another committee meeting, talking about more public safety assistance, and-
Absolutely. I completely understand the snail pace that all levels of government works at, but at the same time, as you're aware, sometimes social disobedience and civil action can make the government work relatively quicker. So we're hoping that it comes down to that.
So last, last question, and maybe Mr. Fuller knows the answer, I don't know, maybe staff know the answer. Do we know how many, so I've participated in the past on homeless counts, and I, and we've made some improvements despite where we are today, and I, you know, the rapid response and all of that. Do we have a current homeless count in the city of Anamo today?
First, I'll just let you know that we're being very respectful out there, not leaving garbage and, you know, being quiet, but that was my, my project. I've got to go in, I started a head count a couple days ago, so this has all just been in a couple days, but I'm still working on that.
Can you give me any preliminary numbers?
A couple hundred, like, I don't know, you might know.
I've, from people I've spoken to, I've heard over two, or, sorry, over 500 roughly. That's how largely the population's grown, spread out over, across the entire city. There's homeless encampments in the north end, we don't really hear too much about. There's homeless encampments on this, in the south end, obviously, we have the downtown core. It could be higher than that, too, that's just an estimate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fuller, April 18th, there's going to be another homeless count, point-in-time count, to figure out how many people are actually are. There's probably about 300 in the community, actually. It's not quite at 500 yet, yet, I say. Question for each and every one of you there and your supporters out in the audience. Why were you not here when we were proposing to put the Chase River housing up? Did you guys just think it was going to be an automatic yes? Because I supported it, and Counselor Brennan supported it. But that's part of the problem, people tend to make assumptions. And we've had other people come forward that have had a huge number of people that would have supported it as well. So the time to support it is when it's actually happening, not after the fact. After the fact is good, but during the fact is best.
Speaking, to answer your question, Counselor Fuller, and speaking selfishly and strictly for myself, the reason why I didn't come down speaking in support or whatever during that process was because, A, I actually personally was not in support of that particular address in Chase River due to transportation issues, but it does, just because I wasn't in support of that one particular location does not mean that we need to sidetrack the problem. I was expecting this council to come up with an alternative location at the exact same time that they rejected it. You know, you come up with a problem, you provide a solution. So that's what I was hopeful for, it didn't happen, and that's kind of why we're here now.
Thank you. Counselor Armstrong.
I just want to reply to that, Matt. We did find, we were finding alternate solutions, we weren't given the opportunity. And I think it's really important for people to realize that during the whole process, it kept changing. We were told one thing, that, you know, it was going to be level one and level two only, which I totally supported, even for that location. I don't support level three in front of a school or a boys' and girls' club. I just, I don't, and I won't. I had no problems with a different location, where it wasn't going to be in front of a school, and I think the majority of council felt that way, but we just sat here and heard parents talking about the issues that they're having, and I couldn't do it at that location. So we were all for finding an alternate location. That takes time, because we have to use city-owned properties, or if we have to sell them, to buy property that's more suitable, we also have to go through a rezoning process. And I mean, and public engagement is very critical, like, I think we'd be severely criticized for dropping this on with no public engagement. And I didn't find out about who even got the contract until the public engagement session, and that's when I found out that the service needs had changed. So I think there's a, the process, I think people don't understand, a lot of the information we were given at the time, had changed. So that's why we were having those questions, and we did ask for time, weren't given it.
I couldn't understand and appreciate that, but at the same time, I must state that, you know, from our end and from our perspective, or I'll just speak for myself, this is a human issue. I understand there's processes and bureaucracies and everything behind everything, but in the end, people are still dying, people are still overdosing, people still don't have anywhere to live. We have people in the community who are getting sick and tired of needles lying around their schools. I don't have any kids, but I'm a private citizen, and I'm sick and tired of hearing about needles around schools and children being at risk. But in the end, there's so many issues that need to be solved. We can talk about the schematics and why we can't do this, but in the end, humans are humans, we just, we need to help these from a human level, and I know we can do it.
No one's disagreeing, but it takes all three levels of government to work together.
I know, but when it comes to time, we don't have time, though, but we can still do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to share with you before, before we wrap this, and that is, an excerpt from the letter of March the 9th, which is Friday morning. This is from Selina Robinson, the Honorable Selina Robinson Minister, and she says, "Please be assured that B.C. Housing values its partnership with Anamo and remains committed to working together to address homelessness in your community once you can identify an appropriate site. Budget 18 included funding to build 2,500 homes for the people struggling with homelessness over the next 10 years. Therefore, B.C. Housing will continue to discuss the potential opportunities for a rapid response to homelessness program in Anamo and the development of modular housing." So they have said, they've said quite clearly, "We remain committed to this project," and, you know, "We're going to, we're going to do our best to make sure that we find an appropriate site." I wanted to ask the clerk, this letter, can we make sure that this goes on to next week's council agenda as correspondence? Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate that, thank you. Okay, so, council, next item is other business. Are there any, is there any business arising from any delegations? Counselor, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to move the first Young Michael's request for the youth advisory committee for, to go out to the RDN. I don't know the exact language, but it was in that realm.
Thank you. Do we have that, is it easy to bring that motion forward? Thank you.
That motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Moved by Counselor Yocum, seconded by Counselor Armstrong. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All who are in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Any other business arising from delegations? Counselor Yocum.
I don't know how to word this. I don't know if it actually needs to be a motion, but for yourself and staff to work with Mr. O'Donnell and have resolve, and, of course, staffs will work hard on the letter you just received, but just to sort of mitigate and get this resolved as soon as possible. I guess it's more just, direction, no, probably a little bit of motion, do you?
Okay, so if I'm hearing you correctly, you'd like to see the mayor and staff move forward with this initiative and try to provide as many answers to Mr. O'Donnell and the principals of this group as soon as possible.
Yeah, the request we just heard.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Armstrong. Any discussion? Do we believe we've accurately captured the motion?
I think we can work with what you've, what you've said and what the request was and word it properly.
Thank you. Counselor Hong.
Thank you. There were, there was a whole bunch of requests. The one I want to focus on is this needle cleanup program one is the key one, it seems like it's easy for Al to work with. Is that part of this motion as well?
I think everything we saw tonight.
So does this motion also include sending staff out to buy property for social housing, moving it forward? Because that's what, that's what this, because in order for us to solve their problem, we need property, and we need to tell the provincial government, that's what they're asking, is they, they want housing. So we need to send staff out to buy some property to put housing up, is pretty much the gist of it?
I'm not sure if it's, if that, we may have to option some property. You may have to option.
So the option is, so what we're doing is sending staff out to find a site? Is that what it is?
No.
It just seems like this, this motion is really too wide.
Let's, let's have Mr. Lindsey answer that question.
Thank you.
Mr. Lindsey.
Thank you, worship. I think just, just as a reminder, maybe, as the council, at the time when you addressed the cranberry property, you did provide direction to staff to go look for alternative locations, so that work continues, and we hope to return to council in the near future, and that's why I don't think there's a requirement for a subsequent motion on the, on the issue of alternative locations.
So what is this motion dealing with, then? The staff are already pursuing that, so why do we need a motion, other than the, the needle program, which I'm really interested in?
I think, Ms. Curry.
Thank you, worship. My understanding of the motion was to work with, for staff to sit down with Mr. O'Donnell and, and the issues he's brought forward tonight, letting him know where we're going with the buying of the property, talking with, looking at other options for housing, needle pickup, and basically getting the tent city off of City Hall property and how we go about making that happen.
So, okay, well, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, basically, sorry, your worship, three to Counselor Hong, it's basically what I got from it is to sit down, for the staff and Mr. O'Donnell to sit down and try to mitigate some of these issues that they brought forward this evening.
But they're saying they're not leaving until we come up with a solution, is what I heard from them. And I don't have a problem with that, I'm just trying to figure out where we're supposed to go with this, so, but, oh, that might say.
Thank you. Counselor Armstrong.
Just in regards to the needles in the living room, those are being dealt with through the public safety, so there's no need for that. That is happening, it's, we're sitting down at the next one to do our strategic priorities, and that will be discussed. I've already spoken with Kevin previously to this, so there are different options that are being addressed for the pickup, as well as with staff, et cetera, so that will, that can stay with public safety, if everybody's in agreement with that.
Well, if we want the camp to stay on our front lawn until you meet and then give recommendations to council, and then council votes on it, that'd be great, but I think we need to fast-track this.
I think a lot of situations are, you can put it forward to council next week.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Beswick.
Thank you very much. To Counselor Hong's inquiry to staff, and Mr. Lindsey indicated to us that we have been, when I say we, staff has been working diligently to identify alternate sites during the process for the cranberry sighting of the modular home option initiative. And so I know that, then that's why the motion seems redundant to me, because we're all, I think the information that Mr. Lindsey would pass on to Mr. O'Donnell is, this is the direction that council provided us on Mar, our February the whatever, to seek other options and alternate sites. Then I hear that we're having our public safety meeting, and I don't know when the next public safety meeting is, to do our strat plan for prioritizing what the public safety's prior, priorities are. Then I'm hearing we're going to fast-track so that we can mitigate the scenario going on at City Hall now. And then I hear about needles, because, and since January, it's been a significant concern about the, the zone between Pauline Herr and Bowen Park and, and the Island Corridor Foundation piece by Caladonia Park and so on and so forth, and speaking with staff, there's hundreds of needles picked up in the same, every day. So I think that we need to direct our staff to meet swiftly with the school board. We are the two agencies that can deal with, so by law enforcement, park staff, public work staff, with the school board immediately. And the gentleman that was here representing, that is five weeks into a 12-week program about needle, so that's a separate issue, all by itself. And I have no issue with us directing staff to meet with the school board and return to us by next Monday with how we're going to deal with that specific subject matter, so that we can tell people in our community that are identifying the, the problems for us, and saying, what are you guys going to do about it? And I don't want to tell them we're going to wait six more weeks before we do, and they were here six weeks ago, if we're going to fast-track things. So let, so let's do it. So to, with all due respect, we need to have a motion that directs our staff to meet with the school board staff and any other third parties that are dealing with needle issues, period. And if we want to deal with sites for housing opportunities, then we direct staff to return within two weeks or less with alternates, period. And then we direct staff to find a location with a third party, or the city, or the school board, or whoever it is, for a bedroom, the, the drop-in centers, period. So we can have three different motions identifying three different things, so that, to Counselor Hong's point, this is pretty big- Hong's point, this is pretty big web that kept, we're trying to catch everything. So let's deal with one, and this isn't dealing with one-offs because they're all connected. So if we can deal with all three in the next one to two weeks, and I guess within one to two weeks we'll find out we couldn't deal with them. Good, at least we'll find that out. So, i- if we don't have specific direction to staff, then we, we'll find ourselves extremely frustrated and we'll be back here in two weeks and the information might not change. The information we'll get might not change. So I, I would prefer that we hit it head-on, all three of those things, needles, property, the, um, drop-in center, all three of them, in separate motions. And then staff can go and task other staff to, to get it done. And if they can't get it done, then we can get a third-party person to help us get it done. Because this problem isn't going away until we do something and we better do something before the summer. So, that's, and those are just my comments. If you want to try to craft three motions out of those comments, great. And if not, then I'm happy to make three separate motions.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Lindsay.
Sorry, I think, uh... Your worship, I think I had that request to speak on from earlier, but I, I would just, hopefully I'm not complicating the discussion any more than I need to, but just as a reminder for council, there's been a number of motions made around this topic and it, it's a hot, it's a significant issue at a, at, at more than just the public safety committee. And I think, um, as an example, at your finance and audit committee on Wednesday, in two days from now, you're gonna receive a report that looks at social response issues. And this comes out of the direction you had last year when you considered, um, the federally approved injection, uh, safe injection service on, on Wesley Street, uh, staff to go away and look at, um, some options for a social response. So that report's coming forward on Wednesday and it will have not all, but some of the issues that you're talking about here, uh, this evening included in that report, including options, uh, for, for funding.
Thank you. Counselor Fuller.
So we're already looking at properties. We're already looking for properties. That's being done. The homeless coalition is working on a drop-in center. Let's get it right. Let's not just open up a building and say, come on in folk, you also need the supports there for the folk, which could involve solid. That's in progress right now. A coordinated aspect around, uh, needles. Well, a coordinated aspect around anything is pretty hard to do in this community, but it's true. But that one can be done because it's not just John Howard, it's not just the school district, it's not just parks, Nanaimo Association for Community Living does it, other groups do it. So if they can all get together, that would be great. Nothing is gonna happen in the next week or two, that's a given. And then whatever does happen is gonna require money. Now, there is money available for the, uh, drop-in center, which is why the homeless coalition is looking at it. The money is there, the funding is there, and they're working on that one and will, that one we may actually have by summer time. Housing, it takes far longer than, uh, two months to build it, even if we did have the money to build it, the site to build it, and the housing provided. So, it's all gonna take time. It's not gonna happen tomorrow. Throw more tents up on City Hall, eventually it'll become, uh, like many of the other tent cities in the, the province that have, uh, had deaths on site, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, let's, uh, get a porta potty for them tomorrow. And we can keep working at this and they can keep camping at City Hall. I don't have a problem with that. I set up a safe injection site at City Hall Park and that, so, um, it may spur things on quicker, but it's not gonna be next week or the week after.
Counsel, Counselor Yocum.
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't realize the motion, uh, that I attempted here was, uh, sounds like it's gonna get defeated, but nevertheless, um, it's basically was expedite things, have someone from the mayor or someone from staff or both or whoever meet with Mr. O'Donnell, have a conversation happening where they can be, a conversation happening, so it doesn't, I disagree with you, or Mrs. Counselor Fuller, I don't want this exploding to a tent city.
Counselor.
So, no, and, so nevertheless, so I think if we have conversations early, we can prevent that circumstance. Secondly, I believe there's a, um, a belief, a small window with the province to, uh, s- save this project, housing project, from the letter you read and the language I re- heard in between. So, uh, that was the point of the motion, is basically get some action happening ASAP before this snowballs so out of control and we know it can overnight. That was my point. Thank you, Ms. Curry.
Ms. Curry.
Thank you, worship. Just hearing, um, everybody, um, that's been speaking, as well as there is a motion on the floor that's been moved and seconded, um, I, we do have it basically worded to have the mayor and staff sit down with, um, Mr. O'Donnell. And basically, I think what, from everything I'm hearing is to just communicate with him everything that we are doing and the different actions that we are taking and then try to expediate that as much as we can. All of the different motions and things staff are working on, try to get those going and sit down and have a conversation as to the actions we are trying to get done.
Thank you. Counselor Thorpe.
Oh, boy, thank you, Chair. I agree with, with a number of the comments that other counselors have made and I disagree with some of them. And I think the intention of Counselor Yocum's motion was, was good, but I'm not sure that it's necessary. Because as we've heard, I think we have given staff direction on, on these different areas. They are looking for land, we're pursuing that, we're working on the needle problem, which we all acknowledge. And, and I think staff is clear on what, what we want them to try and come up with. And I think we've communicated that, uh, hopefully today, to the listening and, and viewing audience. Uh, so whether, whether a general motion today is necessary, I, I personally don't think so. Um, and, and as far as the, the tent city, I, I'm sorry, but I, I, I'm not comfortable with feeling that I'm being, uh, held hostage, uh, to make quick decisions, uh, simply because some people want to set up tents on City Hall lawn. And I'm certainly not in favor of supplying them with conveniences. So, so we are making progress.
Sir, sir! Sir!
So my point is, we are making progress on these issues. We recognize their importance and we will continue to follow up with staff and look for good, solid solutions in a responsible way. So, the bottom line is, I don't think the, the motion is necessary, but I appreciate its intent. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Armstrong.
Yeah, I just wanted to concur, I will concur with, uh, Counselor Thorpe as well. I think it's important to know that, uh, Mr. Horn has been working on the living room for some time. There is a concept in place. We are gonna be bringing it forward. The same thing with the needle stuff. I mean, if we're gonna start making priorities for them, then we better retract some of the other priorities we've given them. So we need to really sit down and think about that if we're gonna do that. Um, and I, and I echo the fact that, you know, yes, people are dying, they're dying in other communities as well, so the, the monies that we did lost, people are still gonna survive because they're gonna go to a different community, just not ours. So it's not like the opportunity was lost to save lives, it's just not in this particular community. Do I like it? No. But the reality is, is that at least the monies are still gonna be available for another community, which still saves lives. The tent city, I think we all recognize that there's an issue with homelessness. I don't think there's one at this person's table that doesn't. Requires dollars, which we've talked about, and it's, the dollars aren't gonna come overnight. So, i- if they are prepared to stay till we can get commitments from the government, then they'll probably be there a long time. Because the city of Nanaimo does not have the funding to build this building on its own. We have to have partnerships and that's gonna take time. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Beswick.
Thank you. Um, I'll try to be brief, but with all due respect to all the speakers and all the issues and all the concerns, um, and, and they're all important and they're all critical pieces. When I, I just don't understand, though, which motion is going to address us meeting with the school board, um, to come to, uh, an understanding and an agreement and a consensus of how we're gonna work together on Pauline Hill and Comox Road Park and, because I haven't heard that piece yet. And I need to know that that's going to happen. And I need to know that we're gonna get a report that's gonna come back to us to tell us how much money we need, because at the end of the day, it all comes down to money and how much money we're going to be able to allocate, uh, to not just this situation at this site, but potentially others as well. Um, and maybe we have to reshift our priorities of where we were going to spend monies on certain things, because this is a crisis. Like, make no mistake about it, so it is. And I would happen to think that there's monies available out there if we just say, you know what, we're gonna knock that one off the bottom. We don't need to do that this year. This is a little bit more important, without having to go and find more money. The money's there. We just might have to shift our priorities a little bit in a crisis. That's what we're here for, that's what we're supposed to be trying to do. So if I don't hear that we're gonna meet with the school board, if I don't hear that we're gonna talk to them about how to address the situations there in Nickel Street, wherever else they are, that we're working together on, then, then I don't think it captures everything. When I hear that we're gonna have a finance meeting on Wednesday morning and we're gonna talk about this, well, then it has to come back here anyway. We, we can, the committee, which is at this council, we're gonna, that's what these COW meetings are for. We're gonna talk on Wednesday morning about what we're gonna bring back to this council. While we're... So if we want to try to be, take some proactive action, then we need to address it at these COW meetings every second weekend here, without having to go back to another committee in order to bring it back here again. So, I completely respect what Counselor Yocum is attempting to do. To the points that have previously been made, we've already directed staff to do these things. And I've heard, when we did the public task force, how do you want us to communicate with you? How do you want to communicate with us? And we've had four or six meetings on that. And so the neighborhoods want to be consulted. And here we tr-, here we did not consult with, I'm not advocating for one or the other, whether should, there should have been modular homes there or not, housing there or not. But we didn't consult with the community. So we get railed every time we do something without consulting the community. We might even have three or four meetings, but only half a dozen people showed up, so we gotta do three or four more. Because now it's getting tighter timeline to make the decision. Everybody wants more consulting. So we didn't consult out there, that's why we didn't make the decision to put those monies to work on that site, because we didn't consult. So here we are, let's do as much consulting as we need to do, but then boil, then be ready to make a decision, get all the information that we need to make the decision. And that's money. Thank you.
Okay, so I would suggest that we've actually got two motions here. One is Counselor Yocum's, and I'd like to, uh, I'd like to have Counselor Beswick bring his forward under a separate motion.
Your worship, I believe Counselor Yocum is willing to withdraw his motion because it basically what his intent was, was communicated this evening. So if, if he's willing and, and the agreement from the second, uh...
Yeah.
He could withdraw his motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so now on the respect of the other one, uh, it's Counselor Beswick's. Counselor Armstrong, what were you?
Just wanted to, to let Counselor Beswick know that we are working with School District sixty-eight. They come to the public safety meetings, we are gonna have that, there will be a report that will be done once staff has the opportunity to do it. And we are working together at that meeting. Pete Sable is at our meetings.
Excuse me, ma'am.
So just to refresh, Pete Sable does come, he meets with, uh, Mr. Britton, he were, he met with us, we've had the discussions around that and they do continue on a regular basis. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do you, uh, just as a question, do you have any idea when a recommendation might be coming forward to council?
I can bring it forward myself, I can draft it up myself. I can bring it forward on Monday, on Friday.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Beswick.
Thank you. Um, that's great, we're making great progress with the school board through the public safety committee. We have a School District sixty-eight, City of Nanaimo, joint partnership, joint agreement. There's a, the staff meet together and I think it's four times a year. And why do we meet? To discuss emerging issues that we have crossovers in jurisdiction, in operations. It behooves me to think that we should not be directing our staff, council-direct staff, to meet speci-, with school district staff specifically to discuss needles, cleanup, pickup, roles, responsibilities, security, on sites that we jointly manage. And if we don't do that, and I heard Counselor Armstrong say, well, I can just bring a motion from, on Monday. Is there a public safety meeting between now and Monday? Then if not, then let's just do it now. Make the motion now. Why do we have to wait till Monday? Make the motion right now. It's a COW meeting, let's do it right now. Let's have the open discussion and debate right now of whether we can do it or not. Because another meeting after another meeting after another meeting. And we were in January, the folks were here in January, and this is just one piece of our community. There's other pieces that are probably sitting there just waiting to see what happens with this one. So, if we don't direct council, if we don't direct staff to meet with school district staff, they're all at work tomorrow, they're all at work Wednesday, they're all at work Thursday, they're all at work Friday, and bring back a report to council on Monday that's a paragraph, and says, here's what we've discovered with the school district. And it's a priority for council that we get this done on Monday. So, I, I don't, I, I'm challenged to think, this isn't news to us either. This isn't the first time we've heard about this. So, if you, if you'd like a motion to direct staff to meet with school board staff and any third party...
Please do. Please do, Counselor.
I'd so move that we direct staff to meet with school district staff and any third-party stakeholders this week and return to staff, return to council with recommendations on March the nineteenth.
Moved by Counselor Beswick, consecrated by Counselor Fuller. Any further discussion? Not call the question, all is in favor. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Mr., uh, we have, uh, delegation from Mr. Lauren Goodall with the introduction and purpose of the new Nanaimo-Saroxman Stadium Board, Directors and Partners with the City of Nanaimo. You have ten minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm Dr. Lauren Goodall. Um, I am the Board Chair of the New Nanaimo-Saroxman Board of Directors, um, of the Saroxman Stadium Amateur Baseball Association. I gather we've provided you with a letter of introduction and to that we want you to meet the board, who, many of whom are here today. Um, as I've stated, I'm the, I'm the president and we have the first president, Bruce Hunter, here. Um, second vice president, Mel Huggins, is unavailable. Treasurer Jerry Deport is here. Secretary Ann Hayes is unavailable. Director Don Hubbard is here. Director Dan Rogers is here. And Director Dennis Campbell is, um, unavailable today. Also here is the President of Nanaimo Minor Baseball Association and the person who inspired forming the Saroxman Board, Mike Hawes. Um, the Saroxman Stadium, uh, as you're maybe aware, is used by Nanaimo Minor Baseball, um, Nanaimo Se-, Nanaimo Senior Men's Baseball Association, uh, the Mid-Island Pirates and the VIU Mariners. And, um, our board would like to express their gratitude for the City of Nanaimo securing the Saroxman Stadium. We look forward to working with city staff to maintaining and bringing the stadium back to being, uh, the premium stadium in B.C. Going forward, the board is working with staff on estimates for capital work to install artificial turf and lighting in the future. This will require capital dollars and the new board will be fundraising and advocating in the community to support the refurbishing of this valuable community gym. We're open to take questions.
Thank you. Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, Dr. Goodall, thank you. This could be one of the, the good news highlights of this evening's meeting. I'm, I'm personally thrilled that your organization has been formed. As, as somebody who, for many years, was involved heavily in minor baseball and was one of the many community volunteers who actually helped build the stadium back in the seventies, uh, I know it is a gem and, and long has been. I also know that it's getting a bit tired and I'm really, really... I also know that it's getting a bit tired and I'm really, really heartened to hear that your organization is going to be working closely with the city to refurbish it, improve it, and bring it back to its former glory. That's going to take some money, of course. So you mentioned fundraising. Do you have some specifics that you have in mind yet or is that just a general hope?
We actually do have some money that's been donated by, well, minor community person and not enough to proceed with any of the identified capital projects. We did have, the city arranged for Doug Wornell to do an assessment of the stadium itself and my understanding is the bones of the stadium were very well constructed and so in fact it's actually just needs, what, not window dressing, but its actual structure is quite sound. We would like to stage the project over a period of years. The first stage would be lights. The second stage would be infield turf. Third stage would probably be sort of the fencing and the building improvements. The fourth stage would probably be outfield turf, but the first two stages for sure. I understand that with turf, you can utilize the fields 10 times more than you can with grass. And so that would allow the youth to get on the stadium. We would probably be able to invite other user groups, maybe hold some community events, maybe concerts, that sort of thing. We'd be, the board would be sort of thinking about that aspect and hopefully bring some, you know, dollars to the community as far as hotels and visitors and, you know, we've got interests from other teams that want to come and maybe we can hold some tournaments and, you know, follow a bit like the counts model ideally, of course, and try and make it worthwhile. We know that there's issues with funding at the moment and getting sort of the go-ahead for us to proceed with capital projects, you know, should we be able to fundraise the money on our own would be, would be helpful. And I understand the province is interested in giving us some money as long as the city makes an ask. We can't ask what the city can, so we've met with Leonard Krog about that already. So there was a deadline that we unfortunately missed, but we'd like to get in line for next year and I suppose sometimes there's some money that's available.
Good. I'm sure you'll explore every possibility. If I may, Chair, one other question. The regular week-to-week maintenance of the ballpark, is that something that your group will talk to city staff and sort of coordinate with them?
We got part of the way through a co-management agreement and had everything but the short straws ironed out and Al's here and we'll be working on that. We do have, I think, what, 95% of it nailed down and the, we've collected some money from the user groups to provide for some of the services. So the board will be administering the funds given to us by the user groups to provide some of the maintenance services. There will be a little bit of a shortfall, but at least we will be contributing $25,000 toward it, $24,000 anyway toward it, so.
Oh, that's great. Very good news. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Bestwick.
Thank you. Well, indeed, one of our finest acquisitions being Rotary Bowl and the Saroxman Stadium to preserve this for future generations to come. We've had the benefit of both those stadiums for approximately 50 years on the backs of volunteers and businesses that have contributed and community, contributed to ensuring that those stadiums are available to the general public. My questions are, one of my comments is, we learned last week that DCC monies for park improvements and so on and so forth in stadiums and infrastructure builds are no longer available to us to use.
Yes, that wasn't good news to us either.
That wasn't good, no. Indeed, it was not good news whatsoever. And so alternate means of funding and financing capital projects will need to be well thought out because our city is aging and our infrastructure, just like Rotary Bowl and Saroxman Stadium and others, are in desperate need of upgrades or improvements or replacements. Have, you mentioned several phases of capital projects. Have you, and you have had a survey done on what those amounts would be in today's dollars, I'm guessing. So do we have an idea of what those phases to bring it to, to the standard that we would like it to be? Do we have a ballpark number?
I don't, I...
No pun intended with ballpark number either.
No, yeah. I understand that Doug Wornell's done some work and he was brought over and we met with him at the stadium and he's putting together a project. He did the Kamloops Stadium and he's done other stadiums around the world.
Great stadium.
So he's got good experience and I forget the name of the architectural firm in Vancouver that he's from, but it's a well-recognized firm that has a special, what, a specialty in doing sports stadiums and sports projects around the world. So that's underway and that isn't quite ready yet, but it's going to go to city staff to have a look at after it's, after it's done. Don has been the board chair.
Please come to the podium, sir. Thank you.
Don's been the one that's been dealing with that piece of the puzzle, so I'll just move aside for him.
I'm not really the bean counter, but oh, I'll do. So lighting, we're around $540,000. The artificial turf in two phases plus all the other amenities were another, yeah, shall we be? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, but three, about $380,000. We weren't going to go LED, but the total bill, if you did all the phases over a period of years, were about 1.2 million. So I don't know how many years we're looking at. We're probably three to four years, I would think, something like that.
Doug Wornell was going to put together something that was exacting and lined out in a way that would make sense, that fit the, sort of the priorities. The first phase would be something to do with lights because that'll increase the use time in the, in the seasons where, in the middle of July, right? Because the baseball teams are on them in February and it'd be nice to be able to allow the youth to use it through the winter and that sort of thing. So lights would be the first thing. We're going to be doing some work on the grass and the stating itself to make it much better than it is now and it's already starting to come around with the, the specific maintenance person that we've got involved at the moment.
Thank you. Just a last quick comment. If, if we've missed the round of funding provincially for 2018, then I assume that that gives us plenty of time to be way ahead of the curve for lobbying and getting our application in for the 2019 round of funding from the province.
I, I'm not 100% convinced we've completely missed it. We're a little late, but if someone else is unable to utilize their funding, then we can have a backup offer, if you know what I mean.
So do I hear, I thought I heard you say that we have to do that. So are you talking to our staff to put this together, together?
We needed the budget first before we could actually apply and then it has to have, the application has to go through the city to the province and there your end is the end of this month, so we're getting tight in time. And of course, there's a lineup of organizations, like minor organizations that are looking for...
Oh, yes, but we have Leonard to, to carry the torch, so we should be good.
We've been to see him.
We've, Don and I met with Leonard. He's ready, he's ready to carry the torch, so.
All right, good. Thank you.
Just so you understand, the fundraising, the plan was a third, a third, and a third. That was what we were aiming for, a third from us and the community, yeah. And then a third from the city and a third from...
You haven't told us that part yet.
No. Who knows?
Yeah. We weren't, we weren't quite ready with that piece. We were hoping that that report would be here for tonight, but it's not, so.
Thank you. Counsel Yocum.
Thank you. Good work, guys. Congrats on your newly formed board. It's fortunate myself, spent a lot of years out there with Mike and Dan and those guys over the years. Question I have, which I'm sort of struggling with, I heard you say, Mr. Goodall, might be all to other purposes. I'm strictly under, we're hoping just for baseball, but I heard you say other purposes.
Well, that was, we, our society is for amateur baseball, right? So that, that's going to be the main goal, though we are, NMB is arranging a fundraiser where the Blue Jays are coming to do something in July. So that's, I suppose, what I was alluding to, it's a fundraiser and goes, some of it will go to the Jays and some of it will go, I believe, to the Saroxman for a previous fundraiser.
But a stadium strictly for baseball.
That, that's the main plan, yeah.
Yeah, great.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we...
Just thinking until you get your turf, because we all know what other things to do to the field, so just concern.
Yes.
Great, thanks.
And we'd like to have a wonderful baseball park.
Absolutely, thanks.
Thank you very much. We have no further questions for you. Certainly appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, it's now approaching 6:30, at which time we had a scheduled break, a recess for 10 minutes. So everybody take a, take a load off your mind. Big strat, please. So for the balance of the meeting, we're going to be reviewing all of the delegations with respect to the Nanaimo Recycling Exchange. And I would ask that everyone be respectful of the opinions of all the different speakers. I ask council to be respectful of the, of the delegations and in reverse. All the delegations respect council and the deliberations that we may have to do tonight. So the first delegation, and these three each have 10 minutes, is Mr. Ellen Goldenblatt. Good evening, sir.
Thank you. Laurie's going to support me with the power of mine. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I start, I have another 145 postcards. And that brings it up to about 7,300 postcards, emails, and letters that have been written. My name is Elaine Goldenblatt and I am here on behalf of the Vote Yes NRE campaign. Over 7,300 residents have contacted you asking you to support the development of a better, safer, more efficient facility for the Nanaimo Recycling Exchange. When we started this campaign, most people were unaware how dire the situation was for the NRE, in spite of the fact that they had been working for six years trying to build a new facility. Two days ago, the Vote Yes NRE campaign published a timeline that documents what has occurred over those six years. We shared that timeline with you. And it is now available to the public at our website, votyesnre.ca. We felt that it was important to lay out the history of the Nanaimo Recycling Exchange's efforts to build a one-stop, zero-waste recycling facility that our community wants and needs. It's rare that we have the opportunity to contemplate the long view and we wanted to create that opportunity. 7,300 residents writing postcards, letters, emails, and letters to the editor represent a significant social mandate. In fact, those 7,300 yes votes for a new Nanaimo Recycling Exchange are more than the number of votes that it usually takes to get a seat on this council. We understand that this council has experienced a lot of pushback over some large-scale projects in recent years. Here in front of you is a project that already has the backing of the community. And we believe that 7,300 is the tip of the iceberg. These are the folks who heard about our campaign and had time to respond in the middle of winter. It's safe to say, support for the NRE runs deep and people understand the necessity for this new facility and the essential work that will be done there. They are asking you to prioritize it and invest in it. The services that the NRE provides are already utilized by many thousands of your constituents. With a better facility and ongoing education, thousands more will join them. The public has asked you to work together with the NRE in a can-do spirit of collaboration, cooperation, and initiative. Sadly, that has not always been the atmosphere that has accompanied so much of this process. Instead of being treated like a valued community organization that has been providing an essential service for decades, the NRE has at times been sneered at for asking our local governments to step up and share the real costs of recycling. In an era of people often feeling that politics serves the interest of corporations over the interests of people, at times resistance to supporting, to supporting the NRE seemed to be motivated by a buy-in to corporate lobbying. VERWIC, the Vancouver Recyclers and Waste Industry Coalition, which includes some large multinational corporations amongst its members, has been lobbying aggressively behind the scenes against any public support for the NRE. But their presentation at the RDN on February 16th, where they admitted to having no plan to deal with hard-to-recycle materials, laid bare the inadequacy and cynicism of their proposal. Tax-based subsidies, some of us call it corporate welfare, that we will end up paying the for-profits if we lose the NRE, will not only have to cover the costs of dealing with the toxic and non-profitable materials, they will also have to include profits for the owners and shareholders. For example, every dollar we pay the for-profit sector to deal with styrofoam will have to include a few cents for the CEO's golfing vacation in Florida. Every fee charged for dealing with plastic totes and Tupperwares will have to include a few cents to pay for the boss's next heli-skiing vacation in Colorado. And here's another thing you probably haven't considered. If we lose the NRE, there is a very real danger that we may never be able to open another nonprofit recycling facility or even a publicly-owned facility, what, once we start paying out substantial subsidies for the for-profit recyclers. Why? Because our federal government has locked us into trade agreements that would allow any of the for-profit recyclers that have headquarters outside of Canada to sue the city or the regional district for loss of potential profits. If you decide to give them a try, only to realize that their services are too costly and not meeting the community's needs, your decision may prove to be irreversible. The community has asked you to work with the NRE to find a solution that will maintain this vital service and affirm our commitment to being a leader in zero waste. The public acknowledges that the NRE's current facility is unacceptable and they understand that it can't get better without your help. The message we are hearing from the overwhelming majority of the public we've engaged with is that tax dollars spent on making the NRE better, safer, and more efficient would be tax dollars well-invested. Don't be fooled by a tiny but loud group of naysayers who lurk, who lurk on social media. People in our community care deeply about the NRE. Every day, they are at the Nanaimo Recycling Exchange asking what has been decided? Has the danger to the NRE been averted? Have the RDN and the city finally stepped up to the plate and done the right thing? Have our elected officials been listening to the groundswell of support for the NRE? Most of you know me. You're familiar with the work I've done in this community. I have to tell you, getting people to take action on this, on this issue has been by far the easiest advocacy project I have ever been involved with. Our volunteers loved working with us because practically every person they spoke to was in support and eager to write you a postcard or send you an email. They were literally pulling the clipboards out of our hands. It was really remarkable and demonstrated to me what we value as a community. Time is almost up for the NRE, as well as for this council's term, but it isn't too late to answer the clarion call for the, from the people of Nanaimo. Your constituents have spoken loud and clear. They have asked you to support the vision laid out in the designs for the new NRE facility on Kenworth Road. Will you hear their call? Do not delay. Do not stop the vision. Make sure that the NRE is here next year, next decade, and in 25 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Counsel Yocum.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. We had, how should I word this? Oh, I'll just keep it quite simple. So the ask, again, do we have a solid ask?
I'm, I'm an advocate. There will be NRE, NRE representatives here to, to discuss those.
Okay. Like dollars or what's the ask is?
Yeah, from my, from my perspective, my answer to that is that, as I said in the presentation, the people of Nanaimo have really just asked... the people of Nanaimo have really just asked you, their representatives, and the representatives of the RDN, to come together and figure this out. So I'm bringing that.
At any cost.
Not at any cost.
I don't know the cost, so.
Yeah, they have not said at any cost, but the numbers that have been thrown around, sometimes, to be frank, irresponsibly, but the numbers that have been thrown around, people are... People recognize, A, that this is a need, that this needs to be figured out. And people also recognize, very importantly, and this is something that we've tried to bring up over and over again, that zero-waste recycling has to be done. So if we don't do it using this model, whatever it's going to cost, we're going to do it other models. And so we have to make sure when we consider... You have to make sure when you consider whatever the NRE is asking for, if you say no to the NRE, what are you going to be faced with? And what's the likelihood that that's going to be cheaper in the long term?
Sure. So this wrap-up is... Absolutely respect what's going on here. It's just almost not fair. There'll be like 11th hour, the past 11th hour, and still see, and still the RDN report we received, which we'll... I don't know if you guys received it.
I have not seen that.
But nevertheless, that was their report. I'd like to see a report from the Nanaimo Recycling Exchange. And then for 11th hour, I still don't know what the request is. So it's really put me in a really horrible position, and not a fair position. And to sit here, say the 7,000 people that say, "You better do this", sure, at what cost? And what's the plan? What's the business plan? I got to do business plans for my child welfare agency, so I'm sure it's not too challenging for to receive one. And fairness to you, this is not you, by the way. You're doing a great job. Just, I have not received it, and I'll be here in front of you as an audience, have not seen that come across. And I don't know why it's such a secret.
I think that the... If you had a look at the timeline that we presented, I think one of the frustrations that the public has expressed is that this has been going on so long, and there has been a sense that for many years, it's been punted back and forth between the city and the RDN, instead of actually just stopping that whole process and saying, "Okay, let's sit down five years ago, four years ago, three years ago, two years ago, and hammer out something and figure it out", it's been punted back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. So now you're coming and saying, and I completely relate, like, "This is an 11th hour. I don't have enough information. Why is this being placed on me?" But from the other perspective is, why has this taken six years? Why wasn't there a long time ago, a sit-down saying, "Okay, we need to figure this out. Let's sit down and make this happen, and stop punting the ball back and forth"?
Well, I agree. I wish there was no punting. I just wish someone would send me a business plan and a simple, "Here's what we're asking for". But anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Besler.
Thank you. Counsel Yocum expressed a couple of subject matters as it relates. Should this project move forward, what assurances can you provide that the business plan will support this venue?
I personally cannot provide those assurances. That needs to be hammered between the you guys, your staff, and the NRE. But I think that the NRE have proved, over 25 years of their track record.
So, thank you. So you answered my question. So, and I'll ask the question to the next speaker and the speaker after that, to try to establish that information. Because again, just like earlier, it's a critical piece of information. Yes, and thank you for sending out the timeline last night on a Sunday night. I was in Victoria all day today and drove back, and that's why I was late, on other business that I left before the sun came up this morning. So I didn't get a chance to look at that as as well as I would like to have. But it's hard for me to get something on a Sunday night for a meeting on Monday at 4:30 and extract everything that I need to extract out of that timeline. And I wish not to look six years back and blame somebody or somebodies for this project six years later not being a priority then. There's three parts, and maybe even four parts to this. It's not just the city and the RDN kicking the ball back and forth about, "Well, it's not us. It's you. It's not you. It's us." It's also the NRE, and it's also the private sector. The world of the recycling, the three Rs, oh my God, has it changed or what? Is garbage big business? Or what? Like, way different than it was six years ago, and surely way different than it was when the NRE was on Northfield Road. Like, holy cows, this changed. So, and it's also going to change twice as much in the future. I bet you in the next 12 to 24 months, it's going to change exponentially more where funding comes from, where monies come from, where everything comes from to operate facilities. We're now doing curbside with leaves and branches and everything else. That's going to impact the business. So on this potential business here, with this seven or eight or nine million dollar building, or whatever the building is, I don't know, but we've been told it's in those amounts. And until somebody tells me it isn't, then I have to believe that it is. So there's a lot of information that's required. And we did have a report that was presented to us at the RDN. And everybody here is on it, so it's... Whether it was here or over there, it doesn't really matter. And it was it was kind of revealing, but at the same time, it didn't give a lot of information about business plan, about forecasts, about what could happen in the industry if MMBC, or whatever they're called now, recycle... Doesn't fund the same way in 2019 that they are today, which I understand is going to happen, that funding is going to be pulled back. So there's a lot of moving pieces. And so, I appreciate what you're doing. 7,300 residents? I don't know if they're all residents, but were they asked? Because when you and I met, I offered you $100 to become a member. And I'd offer you $100 for my son and $100 for my daughter. So I was giving you $300 to start a membership drive, because you're a charitable organization. So if you've got 7,000... You've got a large audience out there that could really help your bottom line.
Absolutely, and that is why, at the RDN meeting that you're referring to, Ben Gesselbrock, representing the NRE, said that the NRE would commit to raising $100,000 a year through a membership drive. So the NRE is on board with that.
So thank you. And I'm just going to close with the Port Theatre over there. They wanted us to provide them $8 million for a $12 million... And we said, "Okay, you go out and raise X", and then we heard from the baseball folks, third, third, third. So for me, I would say, "Go out and raise the money. Tell us you got it, because you've got 7,300 postcards of people that want to support it." And so just, then give us 10 bucks each. Well, you don't need 10. I was going to give you 300 for three people.
Yeah. There, with due respect, I love the Port Theatre. I go there regularly. I support it. I fully support it receiving public funds. I also fully support service organizations receiving public funds. I don't think the hospital should fundraise in order to receive public funds. I don't think the schools should fundraise to receive public funds. And I don't think zero-waste recycling needs to fundraise in the same way to receive public funds. I think it's a good idea, and that's why I think the NRE came and said it in order to get more social license and to make you guys see that they're willing to do the work. But I don't actually think that it should be equated to what the Port Theatre is doing or to what a baseball diamond is doing.
Okay, thank you. So I think the hospital... I'd love it if the hospital didn't have to raise monies for a scan machine or otherwise. But they're doing home lotteries. They're doing car lotteries. They're doing all kinds of things. Because there's only so much money.
Because of neoliberalism.
So, I'm sorry?
Because of neoliberalism.
Okay, so we're not getting into debate here.
You're right. I'm sorry. You're right.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I see no further questions. So the next delegation is Ben Gesselbrock. Thank you, sir, and you have 10 minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, staff. My name's Ben Gesselbrock, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Nanaimo Recycling Exchange. I'm here to reiterate why funding to build a new facility for the NRE to run a one-stop-drop, zero-waste recycling center is an important responsibility of the city. Zero-waste recycling services for non-curbside collectibles is an essential waste management service to the community and one we need to start paying for. I'd first like to begin to illustrate this point through a personal anecdote of when I was first introduced to the NRE. I'm a small business owner running a tree service who owns a dump truck. Five years ago, just after I moved back to town, kind elderly clients of mine, who were forced to downsize because of health reasons, asked if I'd helped clear out 20 years of junk from their garage. I remember looking at that enormous pile of stuff in the back of my truck with a sinking feeling that I was somehow responsible for where it ended up. Not knowing exactly where to take it, the thought of having to dump it all at the landfill intuitively felt wrong and left me with a sick feeling in my stomach. Luckily, my brother suggested to go to the NRE. I brought the entire load and was astonished that when I was done, all I was left was with a small waste basket full of materials that I had to drive to the landfill. From that point, especially after finding out that the NRE was a nonprofit, I've had a deep respect and appreciation for the place and what the NRE has stood for. As you can see, I'm not the only one that feels the same way about the NRE. This is a map compiled from the data collected over two months by the Vote NRE campaign. There are almost 7,000 data points representing individual recyclers who rely on this facility. 85% are Nanaimo residents. Most of these people don't have the luxury of hiring someone to take care of their junk, but they choose not to turn a blind eye to the packaging, plastics, and other items they know are recyclable. Everyone is grateful and a little less gloomy about the world because they can quickly and efficiently deal with it at the NRE. Without the NRE, a typical household junk run would look more like this. First, you drive to DBL, or Alpine, or Milner. These places have scales that are more set up for commercial disposal of construction materials. There, you can get rid of metals, yard waste, and some wood, but at a higher cost. Then you drive to one of the two bottle depots in town to recycle some of your old electronics or food containers that fall into the provincial EPR programs. Then you drive to a thrift store to drop off some clothing and that old clock that still works. Next, you have to phone up a specialized disposal company and organize to pick up those toxic chemical containers you found in your garden shed. After all this, you still have some plastics, a garden hose, some outdoor furniture, and a Styrofoam cooler that you have to drive out to the landfill to get rid of. Without the NRE, a simple one-stop drop-off turns into a half-day, multi-stop driving marathon all around town. If a junk removal company were faced with this reality, the best business decision is to make one trip out to the landfill and just add the tipping fee to the customer's bill. For the average individual taxpayer that has the same time and economic considerations as you or I, spending precious free time driving all around town and paying extra fees to recycle the material that flows through our households is not a realistic expectation and poor management of resources. Current research clearly shows that hand-sorted, source-separated, one-stop-drop recycling models are the only model that can achieve high landfill diversion rates for non-curbside recyclables. The 800 to 1,500 cars that daily go through the NRE that include a very large number of local businesses is an extremely clear example of the effectiveness of this model. This is why RDN Board Director Cole Cloth asked the Verwick lobbyist at the February RDN Committee of the Whole to the applause of the crowd, that if for-profits can do what the NRE does, why does everybody go to the NRE? The answer is simple. Zero-waste recycling costs money. You can't offer to collect the full range of recyclable materials if you have to make a profit. Either you don't collect some items, or you charge people money each time to do so. Either way, the public won't go for it. These are the facts, backed up by current research and what we currently see in our community. This is also why there's no examples of for-profit, one-stop-drop, zero-waste recycling centers anywhere, why municipalities that are listening to their constituents and who are taking recycling seriously, like Metro Vancouver and the Cowton Valley Regional District, invest in one-stop-drop, zero-waste recycling centers that are fully publicly funded. The Cowton Valley Regional District alone has three such facilities. Securing a facility that is centrally located to keep non-curbside recyclables out of the dump is essential, especially when there is no such commercial... There's so much commercial recycling going to our landfill. We have no problem publicly subsidizing garbage disposal and organics composting. Why are non-curbside recyclables still the funless orphan child of waste management? This isn't right, and a reflection of an old mentality that it's still okay to throw things out into the landfill. It's not okay. I hear people getting lost behind percentages, saying that because some things only represent 2, 3, 4, or whatever percent of the waste stream, that they're not a priority. Priorities that choose to permanently bury anything in the earth or burn them up into the sky when they can be recycled just for the reason of trying to save a buck are not the values of the people of Nanaimo and certainly not priorities that reflect value in a healthy environment. Over the past 25 years, the NRE has pioneered for Nanaimo a very cost-effective system for efficiently collecting and sorting non-curbside recyclable materials that include hard-to-recycle and toxic household items. Through years of public education with solid partnerships with the RDN and the city, the NRE has gotten us to the point where we have a system that works and a public that desperately wants a permanent and stable solution to divert these items from landfill. The NRE has already done all the legwork for the city and invested significant time and money into securing, through purchase, rare, centrally-located, industrially-zoned two-land, and designed a facility that not only meets the community's immediate needs, but allows for the expansion of zero-waste services. The facility is designed with the absolute cost-effectiveness in mind. The meager buildings on-site are shells with no exterior finishing, no heating, and no cooling. What makes a larger percentage of the facility costs are the provincial and city regulations for recycling centers that require more paved services and specialized underground drainage reservoirs to avoid any chance of soil contamination. These regulations also do not permit us to build some of the building space as cloth-covered shelters to save costs. At the RDN Committee of the Whole meeting last month, we put forward, as an alternative, should the board decide not to pay for the land in construction of the facility, a rough funding model that would allow the NRE to build the building itself. With a $350,000 a year for 25-year commitment from the RDN, we were willing to contribute on top of what we already have with an annual membership drive. Although we were pleased with the RDN's announcement of funding because it acknowledged the hard work we've already been providing, $300,000 for only five years falls well short of what we required. Although we initially held on to some hope, the shortfall in RDN funding is significant. We, as the NRE Board, respectfully asked an Nanaimo City Council to carefully review the well-established need this community has for a one-stop-drop, zero-waste recycling center. We also asked council to carefully review the ease by which the city has the opportunity to meet this need, especially by considering the NRE has already secured and established an ideal central location, a costed and approved architectural design with a trusted local contractor, and most importantly, a tried, tested, and true, low-cost operational model with an enormous amount of public support. That is all I have to say. Thank you for your time and your continued consideration of this matter.
Thank you very much, sir. I've got a couple of questions for you. Counsel, I keep it to questions to the delegation. Counsel, hold on.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben, for your presentation. It was interesting that you mentioned Metro Vancouver. So what do you know about their facility they just built?
Well, I was flipping through the internet, just looking at what other jurisdictions have zero-waste recycling facilities. And it was like, March 15th, Metro Vancouver announces a zero-waste recycling facility.
Yep, and did you read that article?
I did read the article, yeah.
So you talk about zero waste, but the stuff that they collect is only extended producer responsibilities. They don't collect the other stuff that you're referring to, so they're not at zero waste? So they're nowhere near ahead of us?
Well, that's...
That is the question I have.
I can reply to that, for sure. Metro Vancouver actually hasn't had the benefit of having a nonprofit zero-waste recycling
Oh, I agree.
...organization that has been pushing forward zero-waste recycling. So they're actually starting off, they're putting money towards taking, if you read the article, more and more materials each year. But they actually don't have the knowledge and the skill to do that. And like, in Nanaimo, the NRE's been doing it for 25 years, and we don't have to... And like, in Nanaimo, the NRE's been doing it for 25 years, and we don't have to start from scratch and lose a lot of money trying to figure it out. So that is the difference, for sure.
Yeah, and thank you for that. And that was my next question. If the NRE was so great and they've been doing it for 25 years, how come nobody's copying? Like, why didn't Vancouver just do what we do here? I'm not saying that you guys don't do a good job, but why don't they just do it?
Well, I think that's a great question, and that's why we're blessed to live in Nanaimo. We have a very committed community and volunteers who take waste recycling seriously, and it's been a gift, and we're being handed on a silver platter of like, a committed group. Not every community has that, have like, done the legwork of it. And I think that if other jurisdictions did see the NRE model, and we do have people from the United States, from the EPA, coming up here to look at the NRE, I don't know if you saw the article. There was a zero-waste, because of the community here, a zero-waste conference, and there was people from Brazil, Italy, and when they heard about the NRE, they're extremely interested. So yeah, we're leading edge here.
Oh, and I agree with you. No argument.
And I think that if we continue on this track, because we're on the leading edge of what's happening, it's going to have economic benefits and really draw other communities, and we can be really proud of what we're accomplishing.
Okay, and then one more question is, with regards to Vancouver, it only cost them roughly $2 million to build their facility. Why is it costing so much more to build ours?
Well, I only saw the photos, but it didn't look like they actually had much. And probably the reason why they can't collect, for example, maybe the styrofoams and that is because they probably don't have a compactor yet, they probably don't have a baler. Both those things require to have covered areas. They probably actually haven't, we've been developing a business plan to actually pay for the styrofoam, and so, hold on, that requires a nice big building to house a reuse store because that money pays and subsidizes all the hard-to-recycle and toxic items. So all these parts of this zero-waste business plan all fit together so that it can be as low-cost as possible for the community, for the individual taxpayer. And that's what we have going for us. There may be a bit more upfront capital cost, but down the line, we are going to be saving a ton of money because we already have an operational model that's been working and works. We've been operating in a vacuum of funding for 25 years, and as a result, we're kind of like, the shrew that took over the dinosaurs. We're efficient, and we can operate under adverse conditions, and if the market fluctuates and steel commodities bottoms out, the NRE is going to make it through. There might be for-profits that collapse and can't do it, but the NRE is tried, tested, and true through the hard times, as well as the good. And yeah, that's the reason why.
Thank you. I have some other questions I want to ask staff, but I think you've answered the ones that I needed to answer.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Armstrong.
Again, I'm going to reiterate what Counselor Yocum has said. For three times now, three different meetings, I've been asking to see a business plan or a financial plan. I want to know what the operating costs are, what are the salary costs. We've yet to see any of that. So you're asking me, it'd be like saying you want me to invest in a business without knowing what the business costs, what the salary dollars are, and give you money. I can't do that without a business plan. Are we ever going to see one, number one? My second question is, I still don't know what your ask is.
Counselor Armstrong, by the end of these presentations, I would like you to be completely armed with every single financial detail that you need to make this decision. The financial details are actually not complicated whatsoever, and unfortunately, we were hamstrung by an RDN staff process that we had to respect and the numbers had to go through them. And I apologize if you didn't get the full numbers that you needed to make a decision. However, you're right now, the NRE can directly give information to the councils to make a decision, and I hope that by the end of the presentations, of which we've directed our executive direction to give, you will have the full numbers to hopefully make a very easy decision. This, dealing with the non-curb-side collectible recyclables, is an important public service that we need to provide, and this is the cheapest way that this city is going to achieve this. And it is an opportunity that is slowly, slowly disappearing, and we'll be incurring much larger costs in two, three, four years when we have to get this done anyhow. So with that...
So as follow-up, because in order, like, doing the math based on the figures we were given, we're going to look anywhere from a 10% to 15% property tax increase to support that.
I don't think that those numbers are even close to what the property tax increase would be.
Well, my understanding is per million, it's what, a 1% tax increase? Is that correct?
No. Or maybe, yeah, no, no, 1%.
Yeah, and the numbers that we were given over the timeframe was close to, what, $20 million? That's a lot of money.
Yeah, the costs, I guarantee, are not going to be that high, and our executive director will be filling anybody in on that.
Okay, then I'll stop now and wait for that information.
And I think that if we look at things at an annual cost...
Okay, yeah, I'll wait and I'll get the information then. Thank you. Just, that's one of the questions I do have.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Beswick.
Ms. Silver.
Hey, Ben, thanks. Well, to Counselor Yocum, to Counselor Armstrong, to Counselor Hong's inquiry, and we've had many meetings, you and I, as well, and throughout each and every one of those sessions, the question has arisen, what are you asking for? Because without the detail, without the specifics, the devil is always in the detail, as they say. So we know what took place at the RDN. So the solid waste management plan, recommendation number two, $300,000 into the SWMP plan for five years, and, which still has to go to the province, but I would have to understand that that would probably be accepted and approved and all those things. So it's okay, and which the city pays $170,000 of the 300, plus or minus. And we know that there's $396,000 over the six-year period, and on an annual basis, it is contributed to NRE from the city and the RDN, minus the permissive tax exemption for the property, or not inclusive of the permissive tax exemption, I should say. So then, when we get the report that was commissioned and paid for to try to put some numbers on the page for us at the RDN, and here, I have to ask the question, on top of the $300,000 from the RDN, which the city is 170, what is your ask of this council? Because I heard you say $350,000 over 25 years. So are you looking for $50,000 because you've received 300? Are you looking for the same benefits that you're receiving, and I call them benefits, but the same contributions, the $396,000 in fees and waiving of fees and so on and so forth? Like, so, along with the 7,300 postcards and the six-year timeline that I got sometime late last night, I wish you also provided me with this financial plan. Because at the end of the day, that is the critical piece to the whole equation. What are you asking for and for how long? And what is the return? I'm not suggesting that you guys don't do a great job, that you're loved and all that stuff. It's great. But what is the inform, what's, where's the analytics? Where's the algorithms? Where's the numbers? What's going to happen in 2019 when MMBC, or whatever they're called now, says, sorry, we're not sending the same amount of money that we used to? What happens when our curbside goes 100% picking up leaves and was going to you that doesn't come to you anymore, that you would benefit from? What, like, what starts to happen with all of those minuses?
So, there are items that will never be able to run an efficient curbside collection system for recyclables. It's not going to happen. Having a zero-waste, hand-sort, separated recycling center is essential infrastructure for the future. You need a location that can come, sort, and distribute, and you need to be able to have it in a centrally-located part of town. I don't want to take any more time up here than is necessary because I feel there's some anxiousness to get some hard numbers here and so we can get on with this process. I can assure you that it's quite simple. There's a need for a new facility to be built. The NRE, because we've been paying for the recycling of the city for the last 25 years in styrofoam and plastics and other materials that cannot be recycled, that are hard to recycle, that cost money, we've not been able to generate and build enough capital to build the facility ourselves because we've been paying for the city's recycling. That's not okay anymore. The city and the community has to pay to take responsibility for these items so that they're not polluting our environment. And so, we're asking for a new facility to be built that is community-focused, and it's a nonprofit, so it's community-owned, and I think now is a good time to have Jan Hastings, our executive, come up here, director, to answer some questions around financials and bring some more light to the situation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hastings.
Good evening. I'm Jan Hastings. I'm the executive director of Nanaimo Recycling Exchange. I was going to go through a review of the timeline. I think we've all agreed, we've been doing this for six years, since 2012. We've gone, we have gone back and forth between the city of Nanaimo and Nanaimo Recycling, sorry, and the RDN. In the beginning, the, when we were trying to find and get approved a site design for, because we had, we outgrow every facility we occupy, and so we have outgrown this one, it was suggested by city managers, like, hey, you perform a great service for us, and we also know that our new bylaws for the type of building you would have to build for a recycling operation and all of the site costs that Ben mentioned, we can see that that's probably way out of your league, and so we could build you a facility and you can operate it. That's where the idea came from. So then it went to the RDN, then it came back, and I was pretty innocent in those days. I had no idea what the processes were supposed to be and staff reports and all of that. I just went where people told me to go. So we went back and forth quite a few times. There was a point when the city may have had some land to offer us, and so that was going to be great. The idea with that was the city could offer city-owned land for the NRE. We would fund and build whatever construction we need. That was our working plan at the time. Council voted that down. No, we will not give you land. So then, there we go back, you know, in and out of the process. RDN Subcommittee told us to explore other options, and the options was, well, build something cheaper. So we go back to the city, and the city tells us, no, our bylaws and regulations say you cannot do that. It's one thing to do it down in Chimanis or, you know, south of town. We don't want that in the middle of the city, and by the time you build that and apply all of the engineered systems to that, it is not cheaper. Another option, that the RDN gave to us, was go and partner with a private recycling organization. So diligently, off we go and approach two private recyclers who need a return on investment if they're going to invest. There you go again. That pushes the lease, if they lease something back to us, build and lease back to us. The lease payments are too high. That was actually more expensive than a mortgage for us. So two private recyclers and a developer in town, developers also need return on investment. So none of those worked. In the meantime, our building crumbled around us. We came up with a design for a new building, which has been mentioned, is essentially a shell. It's not an elaborate building. It is uncooled, for the most part, uncooled, unheated, and unfinished. But it fits the regulation, it costs more, because everything we use to recycle has to be contained within that building. And also, the site costs for a recycling depot come in at 40% of the total construction cost. That's very high. I'm told it's usually something like 80%, 20%, but because of all the, we have to be sure that nothing leaks down into the lake and ends up where it isn't supposed to be. So, yes, we have been back and forth. We were here in October, there was a staff report presenting some options, and then there was a second staff report that referred us back to the RDN with a statement that the secure provision of a one-stop, zero-waste depot is essential to the momentum and success of a zero-waste future in our region. Four months later, the RDN denied the request. So where we are is, the public tells us every day, and they have been doing so for some time, that they want the city to build a better facility. We brought that plan and our message forward. I am by no means any kind of professional lobbyist. I will also say, I probably did not navigate the staff report process in the best way. I am not sure our message came through about what we were trying to do. We offered a plan with a tested model for the most cost-effective way to deal with the waste we have now and the waste of the future. We offered a plan that included education, so the right behavior becomes the standard to improve on. We were hoping for a response that said, we have new targets in this area. We are moving from 65% diversion to 90% diversion. So we need all the players, everybody who recycles, the NRE and all the privates, we need everybody on board to meet these targets. What can we do to ensure the NRE and the zero-waste program survives? We hoped what we would do, what we do, would stand out, and I think somehow, the heart of our message, it seemed to get clouded. We also hope for an agreement in principle of the urgency. Our landfill's getting full, climate change is real and very expensive, and we have to change our everyday habits in this community. If you throw your mattress in the landfill, the landfill gets full. If your mattress is recycled, it doesn't fill up the landfill. Filling up the landfill has a high price tag. If you buy a new mattress, if you buy one made of recycled material, it takes 1/5 of the energy than buying a mattress that wasn't constructed that way. We need to do that for climate change. And that, we believe that that behavior change really needs to happen. Some information about plastic. Since 1950, 8.3 billion metric tons of plastic has been produced. We have recovered and recycled 8% or 9% of that. The rest of that is in our landfills and our waterways. We need to do more, not less. The RDN Waste Audit also says that we have way too much recyclable material in our landfill. The last waste audit came in at 63%. I don't know if it's still that high, but it's too high. So we want to do more recycling, not less. That's our key message. So, in this community, we spend money to keep yard waste and kitchen scraps out of the landfill. A truck comes and picks it up pretty much from your doorstep, all of our doorsteps, and takes it to the right place to make sure it doesn't end up in the landfill. This costs money. We do this to avoid the cost of siting a new landfill or eventually transporting garbage to another jurisdiction when this one is full. We spend money to educate people how to recycle. We spend smaller dollars because it makes sense to avoid the higher costs coming down the road of siting a new landfill and climate change. This is our message. So, I don't put this up to point fingers at anybody. There's a little bit of each of us standing in that lineup. We all know we need to do more. The NRE gives us a chance to do more and to mean zero waste when we say it, and to have a plan to reach those 90% targets. And one point about the 90% targets, I sat on that committee, we agonized over that number because it's high, and we know that. We knew it was possible if we use every recycling service we already have in this community, we continue to educate people, and we make a couple of regulation changes. So another big part of our message is, well, why does the NRE have to be part of the picture of the future? And it's because, yes... because, yes, recycling has changed. Nobody really needed to worry about zero-waste recycling in the past, and when I say zero-waste recycling, I mean the stuff we recycle. There's no money for it. It costs us money to recycle. One reason, we have to get to the ninety percent diversion target. It's doing that. It's not gonna be the same way we got to where we are now. It's gonna be vastly different. The NRE is the only depot that does that kind of recycling. It is nothing like the good old days. There are two major changes. Today, many products must be hand-sorted, and you have to have zero, zero contamination, not point five, zero. So, that's what we do at the NRE. We hand-sort and make sure everything goes in the right place. In the old days, these products made money. Now, they cost us money to do that and to, we have to pay somebody to accept it. It's good because then they can build another product out of it, but nobody's buying these plastics from us. The NRE has carried these costs.
Need to get, get it wrapped up.
Thank you. At three-hundred thousand a year for even ten years, that's considerable cost and investment on our part. We've never invoiced anybody for that. This kind of recycling will never pay for itself. From this day forward, these products will need to be recycled with public funds, or we put it in the landfill. We have to decide that. We also heard everything comes down to money and, and the needs, we need to change our business model. Yes, we, there's money involved in this. Absolutely. Given the story about recycling that I've just said, it's really hard to change a business model when it, you're never gonna be paid for these products. Saying everything comes down to money, would we ignore an oil spill in the Sailor Sea if we couldn't make a profit cleaning it up? I don't think quite everything comes down to money. The NRE is honestly, it's like a MASH unit. We're cleaning up a waste spill every single day. If you've been there, you know what I mean. Another thing we heard was, we, we do enough now because we do more than other areas. So, here are some municipalities that actually
Ms. Hastings, I gotta stop you here for, for a second. Counsel, how much longer do you need?
Oh, two minutes.
Counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry. So, so, other municipalities do own and operate recycling depots, and as mentioned, many other regional districts also. But, when you look at the number of them, I'm not sure we do as much or more as other areas. So, I've tried to explain a little bit about our history and why the NRE needs to be here, which brings us to now. We have the same problem, except the problem since 2012, there's now a higher price tag. Our budget today stands at six-point-oh-five million. Last year, when, when we got our budget, it was just over five million. While we've waited and asked for funding, construction has, I'm told, one percent per month increase, and so now we're looking at over six, over six million. Our contribution to date has been significant. We've spent about one-point-three million in buying the property, paying the mortgage. We're quite happy to continue doing that. Every option we've had to explore that were given us to the RDN, you can spend easily fifty to eighty thousand dollars to come up with a design that's going to go somewhere, and we've done that more than once. So, where things stand right now, as Ben mentioned, the RDN Funding Commitment falls well short. The three-hundred thousand, which was earmarked for zero-waste recycling in the first place, not, not a mortgage, won't be approved until May if it is approved. It won't be available in 2019, until 2019, and the five-year commitment is actually twenty years short of the term of a mortgage for us. And so, that's a significant shortfall, and the Board, the NRE Board of Directors has determined that, yes, we were hopeful, but, but hope is just not enough. The Board of Directors has decided the shortfall leaves too big of a funding gap, and they're not prepared to incur such large debt with that level of commitment. So, our construction budget stands at six-point-five million, and I'm here to ask you, yes, together, can we find a solution? Is there a way the city of Naimo can fund the construction, six-point-oh-five million? We will continue to pay the mortgage on the land. We will continue, as, as Ben mentioned, to do the fundraising, commit to those numbers, and, once our mortgage is paid off, that ten thousand a month also, we would offer up to pay down the more, to pay down what it costs to build. So, our contribution has already been there. We're willing to maintain that contribution. It was, these kinds of options that I'm saying right now just weren't flying in the first days of when I asked and then we met with staff, et cetera. It, it just got kind of streamed into one rigid offer. I never meant for that to happen. So, we're open to a significant contribution, but we are still left with the same problem. We don't have the money to fund construction. We're looking for a collaborative process to work together to figure that out. We must now turn to site closure. Time is up, and our leases run out. We need time to close our gates and comply with our lease agreements, which says that we now have to do full demolition on the site, repair fences, leave it as a level gravel lot, to the tune of one-hundred thousand dollars of some very hard-earned recycling depot money. So, whether that closure is permanent or temporary will be determined, determined by your decision.
Thank you very much. Questions for the delegation. Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, Ms. Hastings, thank you very much for coming tonight. I absolutely admire your, your passion and dedication to this, to this cause. My question very simply is, in terms of a potential partnership, if you will, with the city, have you at this point actually embarked on a membership drive slash fundraising campaign, or have you been waiting to see if it's even viable to do so?
The second. One, we felt it would be very irresponsible to ask for people's money and then close the gates. And so, yes, we're waiting to see.
All right. Thank you. I understand that dilemma, and that's, that's what I suspected. I'll have other comments to make later in our debate, which I assume we'll be having, and I may be prepared to make some type of motion later on after our discussion. Thank you.
Counselor Hong.
Thank you. Thank you, Jan, for your presentation. I get what you're asking for, for the actual building, but we still haven't seen a business plan. Like, I think everybody at this council, when, when we see, like, the Deep Sea Discovery Center, like, the kayak people, like, the farmer's market, everybody comes up with a business plan first on how they're gonna make this. So, what happens if you can't, you can't operate? What happens if Recycle BC changes the laws and the rules, which apparently they are? Because I think we're group three, group three. Is that correct, Charlotte?
I don't know to which you're referring to, Counselor.
Yeah, this is their Depot Collection Consult, Consultation Workshop that they did. So, this is something that they put together, and I'm just looking at that. So, what happens if you have no money to, to do this? And if recycling costs more money, are you coming back to the city saying, now we need more, and more, and more? When do we, as a city, say, well, now we built a six-million-dollar facility and it can't be used for anything? So, what's the plan? Like, what's the business plan? Five-year, ten-year business plan?
So, I believe the beginnings of, when we came here the first time, we were working with staff here to supply all those documents. That ended, off we went to the RDN. The RDN asked us for many, many documents, including, you know, what turned into a twenty-year financial projection, et cetera. So, you need to know, we provided every single piece of financial and
Yes.
whatever else information the RDN asked for. We were never asked for a business plan.
Yeah, and thank you for that.
It was, it was told, it was, give us these documents, we will, we will create the business case.
They didn't create a business case. What happened at the RDN was they created a business case for the actual building, exactly what you've presented to us, the six-million-dollar cost. And over that twenty-five years, is twenty million dollars, what Counselor Armstrong, I think, said, from their projections. So, I think, when we asked the RDN, well, how come there was no business plan? They said, whoa, this is gonna cost you way more money than what you allocated and way, way more time than for us to get this done before they're closed. So, they didn't embark on that adventure. So, we got a plan for your actual facility, but I get that, and we got that, but we didn't get a business plan on what ifs. What if Recycle BC changes? What if all these other things happen? So, and that's what we're after, is, is actual business plan for your business, not the actual building of the building, I guess, is, is what I'm asking.
Yeah. And, and I, I don't know, because they never asked us for one. I'll never see that report because it went in camera, so I don't know what it looked like in the end. Don't know how it represented the NRE. So, as I mentioned, you know, we get, you get streamed into a rigid process that I don't have any control over. So, you know, let's bring it back to here, and, and let's say, let's agree that whatever you need to know about the NRE to make a decision, the NRE can provide. I don't have it here in a package tonight. We need to figure out what is lacking from the information that has been provided already, both to the city in the beginning and then to the RDN. I'm guessing it's all there somehow, some way.
We, we, as council, have never seen those numbers. So, that, that's a problem. That's all I can say. I'm sorry, but that's, I'm just saying that we, as council, have never seen it, unless somebody else can correct me about a business plan, three, five-year business plan.
And I understand, you know, you have your due diligence. The RDN has their due diligence. I respect that. I, you know, provide what was asked and, and anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
What you need is, is likely there.
Counselor Yocum.
Thank you. Could the RDN just deal with hard-to-recycle products and have subsidies for those items?
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Could the R, RDN, sorry, the, the Recycling Exchange deal with the hard-to-recycle products and then obviously subsidize for that? Would you guys, would that help if you just dealt with the hard-to-recycle products?
That's what that money from the Solid Waste Management Committee is for. Our, the NRE, because I sit on that committee, and we, we submitted to the Solid Waste Management Plan Committee, that number, three-hundred thousand, that is our expenses every year for managing those hard-to-recycle, zero-waste products for which there is no revenue. That's where that number came from. So, it, it was never meant to be used to build a building. It was meant in that Solid Waste Management Plan to cover those costs. Yes, it's needed.
So, you would, so you would just deal with the hard-to-recycle products and that, so, and not be competing with the private sector?
Well, we've had no choice in the past
Yeah.
because we've had to find the money somewhere.
And the only reason is, I'm not, like, obviously, I want this somehow to work. I'm just not sure about, like, if we're competing with private sector. I've heard numerous conversations at this table. We'd have to express some interest, RFP things, and those type of things. So, this is really problematic, and I, I got the email from, early, last night, and the timeline. And this is need, like, you say, we need six, six million dollars, six-point-zero-five. So, yeah, I'm, I'm pleased you shared the numbers. I'm just really troubled that we don't have more of a package of, of, uh, information for this, like, the whole, the staffing. I don't need names or nothing, just the whole model, like, we all have to do in our day-to-day jobs. And it's really troubling. I don't want to seem unsupportive, but it's really, like, support this. There's seven thousand people supporting this every day. If you don't, you're done. Well, but, we, I have responsibility to know what that is, besides just political, trying to political pressure someone. And that's not fair, but whatever, life's not fair, so I can deal with that. So, I'm just being real there, and I wish I had more of a plan, business plan, unless someone else does. Again, I'll leave it at that. Those are some questions. Oh, and say if we do pass it or come up with a solution, does it have to get tendered, the project and all that type of stuff? Like, does it go by the city rules, the union rules, like, all that type of stuff? Like, there's so many unanswered questions.
My idea is that you let us build it, because I already have a construction management team for all of that to be taken care of. You would not want to get into that game. It's gonna cost you way more than it's gonna cost me.
Yeah, I don't know. I just, I'm just asking the rules, that's all. Thanks.
Counselor Armstrong.
You asked, what, what do I need to make a decision? I'll tell you what I need. I need to see a financial plan. I need to see an operational plan, and I need to see a business plan. Because I can't make a decision without that, because that's like investing in, in something and not knowing anything about it. I do need to see that. I, I mentioned to you that the very first time you came to the finance audit, that I wanted to see a business plan. I want to see a financial plan operating. I asked you about your succession plan. You know, like, we take a look at what happened in Halifax, where all of a sudden, they can't recycle their cardboard, so they have to go to the province for permission to put it into the landfill. So, those are questions that, you know, like, we're, we're faced with, like, you know, because we are gonna have to. If, if, if it does go through it, it's gonna mean a, or an increase in property taxes. So, not only is there seven thousand people here that we have to talk to, there's also the other eighty-seven thousand that, that we need to, as Counsel Yocum alluded to. So, those are things that I need to see, and I'm sure you have them. And I'm sure between all the seven thousand people that support it, they should be able to come out and help you put together that plan. You know, like, I'm, I'm sure you've got the figures for it, and they can help build the plan. Like, as alluded to by, by Counsel Hong, any other time we get an ask for money, there's always a business plan for it, the operating costs, all of that. It's not just done verbally. So, those are the things I would like to see in writing.
Well, again, I followed the procedure that was asked of me, so, so.
Yeah, that's fair. Yeah, but you're just asking me what you need from me. That's what I need.
Let's get that together. Yeah.
That's what I need. I totally, I'll have a lot of questions for staff
Fair enough.
when we get to that point next. But, but you're asking me, like, I mean, I really appreciate the work you've done into it. I went out and did the tour with you. I, you know, I saw that. I've talked to the, to, like, obviously, we've talked to, what do you, VIRAC or whatever. They came, did their presentation where they say they can do the exact same job. So, we have to take a look at all of that, too, right? Like, whether they can or can't, I don't know, because, I don't know. Like, I've done my own research. I looked at exactly what's going on, like, was alluded to again in Vancouver, and their budget was significantly smaller than ours. But then, is it, is it comparing apples to apples, or is it apples to oranges? So, those are questions that I would, I would like answered. Thank you.
Counsel Baswick.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Jan. I, I'm sorry that six years ago or so, you were told that we'll build it and you can run it. I was here then, and I don't know that that actually was presented to us here. I'm also sorry to hear that you were seeking city property at some point in time, somewhere near now, backwards six years. I believe that the staff recommendation, and I could be, I stand to be corrected, not criticizing anybody, was not to provide the piece of property that was being asked for under the terms and conditions that it was being asked for. You made a comment that it's six-point-zero-five or six-point-five. I'm not, so you, I think, three times, like, it was six-point-zero-five, then it was six-point-five, then it was six-point-zero-five. Is it six? Is it 6.05 or is it 6.5?
Just to be sure.
6.05.
Today.
Yeah, so over 25 years, that's 7.5 million. So at $300,000 that the SWMP is willing to submit to the government, that might come back favorably in May, and that's for five years. So what happens in years, so $1.5 million five years later, what happens for the next 20 years on a 25-year plan? Because you said it was over 25 years. So 25 years times 300, but there's no guarantee that every five years, you're going to receive the $300,000 from the regional district, so, which is 170 cities. So I need to know, unlike others, and unlike Councilor Hong, I don't know what you're asking for. I, are you asking for $350,000 a year total?
No.
So, okay.
I'm asking for 6.05 million.
6.05. So our report that we received, and I don't even know if I'm allowed to talk about it because it was in camera. What was that?
Carry on.
Was significantly greater than 6.05 million dollars.
Because, oh, sorry.
All I, I can't, all I can, like you, all I can go on is what I'm given. And so if I'm given something, then I have to, I, that a, that an accounting firm did, and our senior staff, subject experts, are telling us, hmm, it's probably closer to seven or eight or nine, then I have, I can't argue with them about what they're telling us. That's what we're being, everybody at this table right here sat there and heard the same thing I heard. So these aren't my words. I'm parroting somebody else's. So at, at 300 for five years is $1.5 million for, in today's world, $6 million project. But by the time it's done, then it's $7 million. So how much more money do you need from us to service your debt to build the building? That's what I need to know. $300,000 won't do it, right? So how much are you asking for us to provide on top of the $300,000 for five years, over 25 years, to build the building, using the forecast, looking into the future, how much it's going to cost to build it and all that stuff? I don't care about operations right now, but I need to know how much you need from us to build it. How much?
6.05 million.
Okay, so you're going to get $300,000, so you're going to go to the bank and, or you just want us to write you a, do you want us to write you a check for $6 million upfront? Do you want us to provide you $300,000 more a year for the next 10 years? But interest is going to add up, so of course it's not six in it. So I need, that's what we're asking for, and when I'm, when I told, well, I gave everything that I was asked to give, well, I've asked you for your financial plan many times. I've asked Ben, I've asked you many times. So whether you were asked for it or not, to help form the RDN report that was done independent with a, by KPMG or whoever did it, it would be helpful. It would be helpful to have that, whether you were asked for it or not. So I just need to know how much. What do you need? How much? What's the number? What is it? $200,000 more dollars? Because when we met, you said you needed another $200,000 to $250,000 a year from the city, you weren't sure, and that's what was taking you longer to come to us, because you weren't sure what the number was. So if there's somebody coming behind you in a delegation, that's, then I'll let you go. That's going to tell us that, then, then I don't have any more questions.
Okay, so perhaps I can help you with that. The $300,000 is what Ms. Hastings has been calling a zero-waste fund. That's what they've been paying over the years annually to dispose of the hard-to-dispose items. So our contribution of that, of the $300,000, is $168,000 at 56%. That being said, if they provide a requisition to us of $168,000 a year from the RDN, that the cost per $100,000 worth of assessed value will be 75 cents. So the $168,000 that's being requested from the, that will come through an allocation from the RDN, $168,000 will be funded by a levy of 75.3 cents per $100,000 assessed value. If you have a $500,000 home, that will cost you $3.76 per year. Now, I use these, I'm not going to divulge any of the numbers that came out of the RDN report, but I used Ms. Adema's numbers to create what's required in the City of Nanaimo based on assessed value to come up with $168,000 a year, $3.76. The 6.05 million, if I've got this correct, the RD, the NRE will retain ownership and pay the mortgage on the land.
Correct.
Okay, so what they're asking of us is to fund either by writing us a check for the full amount, or provide an annual amount that would fund the debt servicing on $6.05 million starting today. I've worked that out to $1.80 per 100,000 of assessed value. So we've got a $500,000 home, that $400,000 a year roughly to service a $6 million debt will cost you $9 per year.
I give you my $9.
That's okay. And I use those numbers based on what Ms. Adema at the RDN gave us.
That's why they should do a membership drive.
I'm seeing staff shaking their heads.
Staff, actually, we, the Finance Department has not seen the RDN report. I was involved in the committee that, with Jan and Myers Norris Penny, and looked on the 20-year plan, but we have never, the Finance Department has not seen the final, financial numbers, so we could not comment on your calculations.
Well, I can give you an example. $533,000 a year of capital of debt, $533,000 requisition to the City of Nanaimo, according to them, is $2.48 per 100,000. So I just, I've updated those numbers. Councilor Beswick.
Is, I don't know, is Jan the last speaker, or Ms. Hastings the last speaker, or is there more?
Oh, she's the last one.
Well, I, it is so important that the report that has been created, when we're talking about, this isn't any different to me than two hours ago. School board, city, park, school, cleanup, who? Me, you. How much? What percent? When? What's it going to cost? Money to do it. So if we have 30,000 homes in Nanaimo, and it's only going to cost $9 each, that's $360,000. So if that's what I'm hearing, that you need $360,000, I don't care what the requisition says, or what the requisition is for, it's for education, it's for this, it's for that, it's not for the building, it's for something else. The end of the day, the $300,000 is the number that's been determined that is the cost to take the non-recyclable products per se, and we're told in the report that there's three or four of those. And we're told in the report that it represents 1/10th of 1% of what goes into, that would go into the landfill. The report says that. 1/10th of 1% would be kept out of the landfill. So we're all talking here about stuff, and I'm not financier, I just want to know, what do you want? Is it 25 years times $400,000 a year? Is it 20 years times $600,000 a year? And how we split that with the RDN on our 56% or 60%? That's all that I, I'm a simpleton. So if I can't be told that after all of these meetings that I've participated in, and our staff haven't seen the report yet, and we're trying to make this up on the fly, we get criticized heavily. I can hardly wait to read social media tonight and tomorrow about this conversation. If we do something on the fly, which has taken us six years, and our two respective staffs haven't, who have worked on this together on the committee with you, haven't read the report together? I'm not criticizing staff, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying, they can't give us advice, professional advice, because they haven't seen the report yet. I've seen it. I've read it, front to back, back to front. So until such time as our staff can be in a position to tell us exactly what this is going to cost us, not on the fly that it's nine bucks a household, I don't know that. I don't know that's what it is. And it's five years. So we're talking five years. What happens in year six? Because the SWMP money is for five years, $300,000, to offset the cost of the non-recyclable stuff that you take, because that's what it costs you to handle that. So what happens in year six, when that money's gone? If you don't get it, again, in the next ask, the next board of directors says, uh-uh. What happens?
That's the danger of telling us we compete with the private sector too much, and we shouldn't take any commodity materials. That's what we'd pay in five years if the RDN decides. You know, the solid waste management plan is for 10 years. I don't know why it, five years was decided, it doesn't make any sense to me. The term of that plan is 10 years. Why was it cut to five? I don't know. But, so.
But my question, my question is, what happens in year six?
To previous operational model.
What happens to NRE in year six if that $300,000 goes away? What happens?
I don't know whether to answer or not, sorry. I didn't mean to butt in.
Well, I'm just trying to ask straightforward questions.
I don't know which question to answer, sorry.
That's all right. Councilor Hong.
Thank you, and I just wanted to ask also, so the city gives you $77,000 right now for education a year, roughly, right? Is that correct?
That covers five things: networking, and outreach, and education, and independent research, and marketing.
Great, and would you continue to ask for that money?
Yeah, that's for, that's for.
Okay, and then?
A different set of operations.
Yeah, so, I know, but it adds up, again, to the taxpayers. So again, it's, so that's another one. Would you continue to ask for another $270,000 roughly from the RDN, which I guess I have an issue with, because now we take our own yard waste, we pay for it, the RDN takes yard waste through the NRE, which the NRE then pays the bills, which the taxpayers are paying for, which we already do. So I don't know why yard waste is going there and the taxpayers are still paying for it. So it seems like it's, I'm going to have to talk to staff about that one, because I'm really confused about that. So would you still continue to ask for roughly $270,000 from the, from the RDN? Because that's currently what they pay you per year for your fees.
Well, actually, it's not, and yes, we need clarification on yard waste. It's one of the most confusing.
Agreed.
The RDN has a put-or-pay contract at Nanaimo Organic Waste. So they must pay to take our kitchen scraps there, and they need a certain amount of yard waste to mix with that. That's why they have that contract. We just implement the contract, they do not give us money, they simply pay the tip fees.
Pay the bills, yes, and I agree.
So when that contract ends, which it is going to because of curbside pickup, that's done.
So with the money?
We've already taken that out of our 20-year projection. I don't know if you caught that or noticed it, fine print, probably. It's, no, that's already gone. We are planning for that to be gone.
But yet you still?
The program may or may not continue, from which we could make, continue to make revenue. Like you, I'm not going to project that on the fly here and now in a short time.
But that's what we need to make projections, and I get not on the fly, but that's what we needed to see, because from your plans, I see those bins, and you plan to collect on a lot of yard waste because of the size of the actual space, on the outdoor space that you were willing to do with your building, because it seems to be like a lot of outdoor space with bins for yard wastes and as such. So it's just one of those things I see when we saw the design plans, that you had anticipated on taking yard waste.
That design is for the exact same operations we have now.
But you've just said you're not going to be taking it.
Remember, we've been designing it for a long time.
Yeah, so you're not going to be taking it.
So, as, could I, shall I answer? As I mentioned, that will come, the RDN will stop paying those tip fees, and the NRE, because it's a centrally located area, may or may not carry on with a yard waste program, completely an NRE yard waste program, for which we could make significant revenue or not, doesn't make that much money, in the future, which would, or would not become surplus, that we are, again, offering back to this project to contribute.
Yep, and that's, and I agree with you. I don't see you having, but as a one-stop drop-off, it's convenient for people, what I heard, to drop off yard waste. For some of the ones that don't have it, which I'm assuming everyone will, but I guess you won't, the RDN City and Nanaimo won't be taking bigger sticks than, so it's those questions that we don't have answers to, and which is, we're trying to figure out on what the city is going to do with our yard waste program, which I didn't support to take, and what you guys are doing, and how you're going to fund these, or what your plans are. So I can't do those with all these numbers, because at this rate, when I look at this, just for the city and Nanaimo alone, not, well, if I include your $6 million ask at 3.5% mortgage, it's about $30,000 a month, $360,000 a year, I think is what Councilor Beswick or Mayor McKay said, and then taking the $300,000 from the RDN, $170,000 roughly is Nanaimo's share. $77,000 from Nanaimo, that already adds up to $600,000 of taxpayer money. And I'm not even sure what the RDN's share will pay, because if it's $270,000, I know that's yard waste, but if we take yard waste out, there is still the free disposal fee and a few of those other fees in there that I don't have on the top of my head to break down. So when we look at this, it's roughly a $700,000 cost for the taxpayers at minimum forever, or at least until the building's paid off in 25 years. Or in the RDN's case, five years for the $170,000 if they decide to go anywhere else. Five years is a good term. It's really unethical to go past five years for anybody to commit to that term. So I know why they went with five, it's just more ethical to give somebody a five-year contract as opposed to a 10-year contract. It's like our self-loan bills. I don't want to be stuck for three years, why am I going to be stuck for two? So I understand that. It might exist after, but we don't know. So that's just some of the questions I have, and again, I know I don't have the answers, and I was just hoping for some. Thank you.
Before you go on, Councilor Thorpe's got a question to ask. Are you going to be putting forward a motion to refer to staff for Rebecca?
As soon as the delegation is finished, that was the intent of my thought, but I do have some comments to make as well after the delegation. do have some comments to make as well after the delegation.
I wonder, with respect to that one, uh, Ms. Fuller, you have had, you worked with the RDN on this file. Do you feel confident, based on what you've heard tonight, that you can provide counsel all of the answers to the questions that we have?
If council wants business plan, no, we do not have. As far, I would agree that all that was done for the RDN was a 20-year projection on the operations of the building, or that's my understanding. That's the meeting that I sat in on is where we did financial projections for 20 years for the operation of the building. But if council wants a business plan to make a decision on this, a business plan would have to be developed so the NRE would need, because I have not seen a business plan from the NRE. We have seen financial statements from the NRE, that is correct. They provided that to us, but we have not seen what we would consider a full business plan for the operation of the new facility.
Thank you. Counselor Thorpe.
If there's no more questions to the delegation.
We have no more. Thank you, Ms. Hastings.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Chair.
If we can get on with our business, folks?
So if I may, I have some comments I'd like to make, and then I will make a motion. And then we can, we can debate that as you will. So first of all, uh, for me personally, some of the concerns and questions that seem to bother others around this table are not as big a concern to me. I keep hearing the need for a business plan being stressed and I understand, I understand that we would want to see some type of business plan, but then I have to keep reminding myself that we are talking about a not-for-profit organization here that provides a service to our community, that has the support of our community, that first of all allows people in our community to recycle just about everything fairly easily. I haven't heard anything mentioned about the social enterprise component of this organization, the employment it offers to people who might otherwise not have a job, the resale, the thrift store, which is part of the organization, the education component which they provide, and the fact that they rely mainly on volunteers. RDN funding, uh, is a fee for service which NRE provides. That's fine. Now I'm hearing, and I'm hearing fairly definitely, they need money for a new building. They've got the land, they've got a design, it's expensive to build to meet the requirements that are necessary. So they're asking us to help them. And if we buy in a partnership with them, it'll also be a partnership with the community, with a fundraising drive, a membership drive, maybe corporate support, hopefully. Other nonprofits have come to the city and asked for money. And I don't recall us getting really bent out of shape about a business plan. We haven't asked for a business plan. We've acknowledged that they provide a service to the community and we've been willing to help them. Now, admittedly, the amount has been less. But to me, what's just as important is that what the NRE does seem to have is a good operational model. And they've proven that it works over years. So what would be the picture, and this is what I'm thinking, what if the picture, what the, what is the picture if the NRE ceases to exist? And the, the short answer is Nanaimo will recycle less because people will not be bothered to trail around to all the different places that might be necessary to drop off their bits and bobs. We are not being asked to invest in a business. We're being asked to invest to ga, to invest, rather, in a service to our community. And sure, we have to ask, is it worth that investment depending on how much is the ask? Well, I think we've been told tonight what it is, and it's substantial. But I want to give this a chance. And I'm not prepared to make a motion to do it just on the fly. I, I agree, that's, that's not good governance. I think we recognize that council has to be responsible and we have to investigate this. But that's what I'm going to ask tonight, that we give our staff a chance to investigate this a little bit further before we slam the door on NRE for good. So, Mr. Mayor, after all of that, my motion, because I, I recognize that, that making a financial contribution will have implications for our sanitary user rates possibly, but I'm going to make a motion that we ask our staff for a report on options to financially support the request of the Nanaimo Recycling Exchange. On options to financially support the request. And this will enable us to make a good decision. It will mean a little bit more time, but it will maybe give the information that other counselors feel they need, and if we choose at that point that we cannot responsibly proceed fair enough. So that is my motion. If there is a seconder?
No second.
It's been moved by Counselor Thorpe and seconded by Counselor Armstrong. On the motion, Counselor Hong.
Um, thank you. I support sending it back to staff for information, but what exactly are you asking, Counselor Thorpe? Because I think the RDN did do that. Because all they're asking right now is for $6 million for a building. That's what we did at the RDN. So what more information do you need? I'm just confused on, on what we're asking. Are we asking staff to do a business plan? Because we spent tens of thousands of dollars on this plan at the RDN already. So from what the RDN said, if we wanted a business plan, it was going to cost lots more, tens and thousands of dollars, is what they told us, is why they didn't do it within the timeframe that they had to report back to us. So I just need a clarification on what exactly you're asking for staff so staff have, actually have direction because they can just call the RDN and get the report and say, here you go, if this is what you're asking. So just a clarification first.
Sure, if that's all right.
Thank you.
So my understanding, Counselor Hong, and, and you can correct me, the NRE funding was for the services that, sorry, the RDN funding, uh, the $300,000?
We're not talking about $300,000. We're talking about the building. That's the report that we got.
Okay, okay, sorry, but bear with me. My understanding is that request and that, and that give was for services rendered, fees for services, which was, and the original ask that we heard at the regional district was for us or the regional district to buy the land to build the building.
Yes, we have that report.
And that was turned down.
But we have that report.
Yes. What I'm hearing tonight is a different request, which is simply money for the NRE to build their building. That's what I heard tonight. So my request and the intent of my motion is to ask staff to look at what are the options to allow us to financially support that request? What impact will that have on our taxes if we do it? That's the intent of my motion.
Just for the $6 million building is?
Yes.
So, so for staff, to be clear, because at the RDN, they asked us to buy the land from them too?
I'm not talking about that option.
Okay, so the only option you want to know is the number for $6 million. So that's clear to staff.
That's my intent.
Counselor Beswick.
Uh, thank you. So if I understand the motion correctly, and the intent of the motion is to determine how to come up with the $6.05 million, over how many years, how we can do it, if it's beyond five years, or if it's 20 years or 25 years, if it's an AAP, or if it's a referendum, or if we can just go borrow, and we can't just go borrow for something that's over a certain period of time. I'm hearing that the $300,000 has nothing to do with the, with the construction. It's just all about offsetting the amount that it costs NRE to handle the products that don't come with any money attached to them. And we, and once our staff who haven't seen the report read that report, it will answer pretty much all the questions that they will have about the options that are available to us and what the cost over 20 years will be, over 25 years will be, at what percent that we borrow the money at, et cetera, et cetera. It's all there. And it tells us how much it is. So it shouldn't take long because it's there. And it, so I'll just leave it, so at the end of the day, it comes down to, what I said earlier, it's just money. It's just money.
Ms. Gray.
Thank you, Worship. And I just wanted to also make council aware that there is some legislation. The Community Charter has some legislation regarding, um, partnering agreements and loaning of money, that sort of thing. So we'll have to take that into consideration when we report back to you.
Thank you. Counselor Armstrong.
Thank you, Chair. And that goes along with one of my questions too, that, there'll be a couple for staff, if that's all right. On that, I understand that there is a policy, and please correct me if I'm incorrect, that we cannot give to nonprofits in their direct competition with private industry. Is that accurate?
I, I don't know the answer to that right now. I just know when it comes to the Community Charter and partnering agreements, entering into agreements for over five years, sometimes it does require a referendum question out there and/or at least public notice and that sort of thing were required to be.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. So I would like that to be looked at, staff, because I think that's something we need to look at. Uh, my second question of staff is that if this does get approved, based on policies and procedures, does this have to go to RFP? Because it is city dollars that are used to that. So does that mean that we have to put it out to RFP and perhaps the, the person that did all the, all the background and all that information would not even be chosen? Could you please clarify that for me?
We'll, we'll look into that as well, Ms. Armstrong. I don't know if we have the answer for that right now.
John? He knows the answer.
Yes, that's correct. If it's, it would have to go through a public process.
So, so that's a concern then, that all this work that has already been done by the, uh, previous architect, whatever, could be null and void and we have to put it out to RFP and then it has to go to tender? So that could increase us dramatically. So those are, I think, I think things that we need to be heavily looked at in that because as we heard from Ms. Hastings, the preferences, they've got the plan, they've got all that. But my understanding from our procedures and policies and biologs is that we would not be allowed to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Hong.
Thank you. Now I'm more confused. So are we, I thought they just wanted to borrow the money. We're, we're not going to build this, are we? Like under city money?
Can I help here? Can we just, I think staff has heard everything that we've, that we've asked tonight. Can you sit down with the NRE? I want to know exactly what it is that the NRE is looking for on an annualized basis.
Because if we?
Everything.
Yeah. If we build this building, have we talked to the union? What is the annual?
Not building any buildings, Counselor.
Okay. Because what's the annual maintenance of the building if we own it?
It's none of our concern.
So we're just lending them the money?
We are backstopping the loan. We're providing them with funding for their capital costs, for their capital funding of that building.
Okay, so then, thank you. So I want to ask staff some of the following things. I think Counselor Armstrong mentioned that competing against the private sector is a huge thing. What's stopping the next group from asking us for the exact same thing? Because Restore for Habitat for Humanity is nonprofit. They can come and ask us to build them a new building because we just built NRE a Restore. Is that possible from staff's perspective? It's the same thing. Salvation Army runs a thrift store, Restore. Can they come forward to borrow some money to build a building?
Yes, that's correct. They could.
So with the $6 million for the building, does that include equipment? Or is that just the building? Because we talked about a sort line, that was a million dollars for a sorting line to build it. So a question to staff, I guess Ms. Charlotte Davis, is, is any of our private guys wanting to put a sort line in or looking at it?
I haven't had those discussions through you, Worship.
Should we have these discussions with regards to this information that we've tasked you to do? Because I'm not going to support a nonprofit putting in a sort line when? When it's in the plan for expansion? Because that's when Jan told us that there would be a sort line and we've been hearing these. So this is where, if it's just for the building, I like the cost, if, if that's what they're asking for, no equipment, just exactly what the building is, $6 million, would be helpful.
I think in, in preparing a report, staff would want to be very clear on what was included in the $6.05 million.
I would appreciate that. Thank you very much. And then, just also on the future of recycling, everybody knows that China is turning it down. We're, we're lucky because we do have Recycle BC, which tries to reduce the amount of contamination. But do we even know what, what's coming up? Like, this is the consultation work shop. I'll give it to you, Charlotte. Do you have this?
I haven't seen it for depots, but I've seen it for residential.
Yeah. So I'll give this to you because I'd like staff to include this because some of these ones, they're interesting to look at. And I like to know how that's going to affect us with regards to the area and how they're going to be able to work with this because what Recycle BC is going to do isn't, I would like to see an update on what next year's plan is, especially how that affects our, our, our recycling. Because the mayor said in the newspaper that we have half a million dollars left over from our recycling. Is that correct?
I think you already got the answer to that, Counselor.
Well, I'd like to publicly hear that because that was never expressed. And the media, the mayor said, it costs us a million dollars. We had a half a million dollar contract. We have half a million dollars left over from Recycle BC. Do we have any money left from that Recycle BC or is that all used up?
The user rates that are calculated are current, calculated on what our current costs are, so the user rates cover our costs and there's no, no surplus.
Great. Thank you very much.
So last two speakers, Counselor Yocum, Counselor Thorpe, then we're going to call a question. Counselor Yocum.
I know, we're, we're getting tired. It's a very important subject. I think we're walking, like, I want to be as supportive as I can. We're walking a slippery slope here. We're dealing with, and I get a nonprofit, I run a nonprofit as well, and I get all the rules of nonprofits. And, but as a city, we're walking a slippery slope with someone asked a question about building buildings. I'm just wondering if it'd be more, a way more conventional way for the dollar? We know the dollar amount. We know the monthly amount needed to pay for a mortgage. Jerry had it somewhere, whatever was needed, 300, 3, 360 a year. Because I just think it's a slippery slope. I don't even know if it's in all the regulations, but we're going to find out in the report. And I'm just curious why, I, I got a loan for a nonprofit, not even fee simple land from a, from bank, TD, for a $5-point-something million for my nonprofit without owning land. So I'm just wondering, wouldn't it be easier for this group to go use the land as collateral and get a loan? Because if I was able to do that on nonprofit and on, with non, on fees, non-fee simple land, basically putting nothing down, had no collateral, and we're a nonprofit, it would just be cleaner. I just feel like this is, it's just, it's a slippery slope. And I, and I get the mountain, we know the mountain that's needed now, 6.05. Just want to put that out there. And the little concern about the groups that are going to follow up. Anyways, I'll leave it at that. Just wanted to speak, I'll wait for the report.
Thank you. Counselor Thorpe.
Thanks, Chair, and I'll, I'll be.
Last word.
Yes, thank you. I, I just want to be very clear on something because I'm hearing a couple of comments. I do not support the city building this building for Nanaimo Recycling Exchange. The intent of my motion is for a staff report on options if we simply gave them the money they are requesting. And if we wanted to look at giving them that money, then how would we fund it? What would be the implications to our taxes or where would it come from? So that we have that information, we can make that decision. So I just want to clarify that. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. So there is a motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded. Going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed. Show Counselor Beswick, Beswick opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Did you sign up, sir?
Should we all run to the delegation stand? Up in the audience? Hang up with staff?
Sir? Oh. Oh, that's it? The first, the first speaker is Dorothy Houghton.
Hi. Well, I see the fire chief has left, and I had a question, I guess, I don't know if you guys can answer this or not. In her report, she was talking about the overdose numbers, and I was wondering if those numbers for the, for the overdose rates, if those included deaths as a consequence of the overdose.
I would suggest, she's looking at responses.
Oh, I see. Okay, just responding to the, to the incident. Okay. My next question is, what year did the, I'm not sure if I've got the right name of the, the comprehensive homelessness strategy? What year did that start? Do you know?
I don't. Counselor Armstrong.
I believe they've been doing a homeless strategy for quite a few years, and now we're, it just keeps getting bigger and bigger and building on the previous years.
Right.
But I could be incorrect, but that's my belief.
Okay, and a supplement then would be, did that, does that strategy include looking for alternative properties?
That would fall, Ms. Houghton, that would fall under the affordable housing strategy. That is ongoing right now as we speak. They're going to be going out for community consultation in the very near future with their presentation.
Right.
So I think that's.
So it's a different?
Yeah, but they do all work closely together, like, the different staff members all work closely together and work back and forth. Because we've got a lot of committees that actually piggyback each other, like Community Vitality piggybacks on.
And the reason why I ask that is because with this funding that came up, that, and that housing that just got voted down, why we don't have an alternative piece of property if this has been being worked on for so many years?
I can answer that, too, I think. Part of the issue is that you have, we own quite a few city properties, like, you know, all over. Part of our policy is that they won't be just in one area, so they have to be in different areas. So when you look at the properties that were owned in the south and in Nanaimo, that was the only one that fit the needs of that specific project. So in order to do that, council set direction out to staff to go look at alternative sites, which would mean possibly, you know, selling ours or trading whatever. That all takes time. Then we also have to fast-track rezoning. So there's all these factors involved that people aren't aware of that have to happen. So it's not like, I mean, we have a certain, we say we have a certain number of inventories, right? But each, like, you know, you talk about you want, they need to be close to bus lines, that type of stuff, or supports, all of that. So in that particular case, and anybody else will correct me if I'm wrong, that was the only piece of property that we currently own that fit the needs in the south end of town.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Beswick.
I'll just try to chip in there, too. It was probably back around 27, 2007, thereabouts, when Rich Coleman came with the homelessness initiative project, that we were allocated six sites, or six projects, to go on six different sites. The government pulled one away, which is about eight units, and then we did three, and then four, and one was going to, one has turned into the project on the Quarterway Bridge site there. That is not what you would consider, but those, but those funds were made available. But you would not consider that to be one of those properties, like Uplands or the Cranberry potential project and so on. So probably 10 years in the making, and I'm sure that there's been other iterations before that, leading into this, where we are today.
Right. Thank you.
Before you go, you brought up the question as to whether or not, whether or not there was a linkage between our, our purchasing policy, our land purchasing policy, and our affordable housing or homelessness action plan. There never has been. But I can tell you right now, based on what happened with Cranberry, perhaps there should be.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you. Yeah.
I think so. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one, Mr. Boland.
Ladies and gentlemen, a couple of questions, which I hope will be fairly quick, but just leave me, my mind boggled from last week again this week. The question of finding an alternative site. We have a comprehensive and quite extensive computer system linked with all of the information about who owns what, where it's at, what facilities are on it, whether it's vacant, or whether it may be junk ratio between any existing structures and the land, which we have several buildings here in town that really are in junk situations. Why, with all of this comprehensive information, and you, as I say, you own, know the owner, you know the tax status, why does it take a terrible amount of time to determine what the eligible properties are? Once you get past that stage, then I can understand the need negotiations. But these are all factual information. Then, after you've got the facts, you can get into the politics, politics of the thing. And I'm just finding it terribly difficult to understand why this should, the search itself should take any time at all, technically.
Mr. Lindsey.
You worship, what I would say is, I think it was two weeks, maybe three weeks ago now, that staff brought forward reports based on council's original direction to look for alternative sites. So our process was very much what the speaker outlines. And open, we had a report that identified all the city properties in the city, sorry, all of the city-owned properties, citywide, that met the criteria for a project like this. We also did the same for council for private properties. But that is the, the tools you've discussed, and the process is very much part of the work that goes into generating those reports and that list.
And I will say, I did, I believe that I did see a map showing some properties, but I think they were all related to the city. As I recall, your initial, the initial request that went to you was for, only for city-owned properties. But anyway, we've got provincial property, we've got federal property, we've got school board property, we've got private property. All of it is possible, to some extent. And I just still find it difficult to understand. If we know what the requirements of the site are, do we really need, I think it was, Cranberry is 11 acres, as I recall. I don't believe you need 11 acres for 41 modular homes, or 44. But again, I don't know what the criteria were, but certainly I'd like to know, and I would suspect that you would all like to know exactly what the criteria are on the search, because once the criteria are there, it falls out of your system. We're paying a lot for that system, and it's quite a good one. So, anyway, I still don't understand it, but maybe I never will. So I can move on to the next question, unless.
I would just add, your worship, that the clear, the criteria were established, I believe they were in the report that came in open that evening. Council's motion was very clear. It was not just to look at public properties, but also private properties. Staff did that, reported back to council on that, on that motion. So that work has been done.
Excuse me, then, but are we saying that there are no properties available? So we might as well forget about going after this money, because there's nothing there?
The original, the original criteria was, needed to be city-owned, needed to be appropriately zoned, and needed to be in the south end. That came up to one property.
Okay. If that's, if that was what was put to staff, I can quite understand what the problem is. Maybe a little more thought might have gone into that. But anyway, I'll leave that aside, because I have one other question that really kind of bugs me. And I, in the discussion of the Nanaimo Recycling Exchange, there was considerable discussion of a document that apparently was done, or is being done, by the regional district, that some people seem to have seen, but nobody else seems to have seen. Can somebody tell me what this mysterious document is, and where I could get a hold of it?
Where, I'm sorry.
The document that's being tossed back and forth, as I understood it anyway, a document that was done by the RDN, but it couldn't be released, and some people said they had seen it, and some people said they hadn't seen it. And I'm wondering what this document is and what's in it, because there were intimations that the information you were asking for tonight, a lot of it was in that document. And yet we've got, what, eight people out of nine who sit on the RDN. The RDN gets, what, 60, 40% of their money from us?
56.
Anyway, whatever it is, is there such a document? And is there some reason why you don't have it, and the public doesn't have it?
Okay. So perhaps I can turn this question over to the vice chair of the RDN.
Oh, thank you. We'll all certainly try to answer.
Mr. Boland, and others can add in or correct me. Yes, there is a document, and it was the result of the recycling exchange's initial ask at the regional district, which was to buy the land and build the building for them. Staff at the regional district were asked to produce a report based on that request. It was quite an exhaustive report, which went into a lot of permutations and details, and the regional directors received that report. And just as we were receiving the report, the, and I think this is fair to say, the recycling exchange changed their ask. Away from asking us, or the regional district, to buy the land, build the building, they changed their ask to a straight cash request. So the regional district document that you're referring to was an in-camera report, which we all saw, and it, unfortunately, no, I'll take that back. I think it answered some of the questions that people had, but not everything directly related to the new ask, which is a simple cash request.
Well, as you probably know, I'm not a big fan of a lot of your in-camera meetings here, and I'm certainly not going to be happy with them there either. But it seems to me that since the ask is coming really to the public in the end, no matter what you decide, the public will be paying for it, that an in-camera problem such as that isn't really an in-camera problem. I'm not sure who's under section 90-1, which I assume it was under 90-1, not 90-2, was being offended. Which clause in there?
So, so again, I'll attempt to answer, and my answer would be this, that their initial request did involve some issues relating to labor.
And land.
And land, and which, which qualified it for in-camera. And I think that was a correct interpretation. I'm sorry, sir?
General or specific? I believe specifics might be exemplified.
Okay, we're not here to debate it. Question period.
Generalities, I suspect not. Anyway, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Beswick.
Uh, sorry.
Next one is Mr. Boland again, 1213. Okay, Mr. Gartshor.
Good evening. Thank you very much. A long evening. Appreciate that we're all here. My questions are to do with the monies, item number 13. Items that come, the monies that come from Recycle BC, which I understand is about a million dollars to the city annually and about a million dollars to the regional district in Nanaimo. Where do those monies go?
They come, they come directly to the city.
And what does the city do with those funds? Use them in general operations? No.
No, no. It funds the, it funds the pickup, pickup and hauling out to the, out to the facility designated by Recycle BC, to do the recycling.
How much of those funds go to the Nanaimo Recycling Exchange? Because I heard somebody refer to some of those funds going to the NRE.
At this point, zero.
Sorry?
Zero.
Zero. So if that money declines, in terms of the money coming from the recycling exchange, then it would not impact the Nanaimo Recycling Exchange, then? Is that correct?
I don't, I don't understand your question.
So, so the NRE would not be impacted?
Correct, correct. Yes, now I'm going to, yes, thank you.
Okay, just wanted to be sure, because I thought somebody was saying that that would impact the NRE. What, was there a business plan done on the new garbage trucks? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Was there?
Yes.
Okay, so that included operations and costs and all those kinds of things?
Yes.
Great. And the city paid for that, I'm imagining?
Yes.
Why would the city not want to do the same thing, to generate a plan with the Nanaimo Recycling Exchange, given that they are doing part of the business of bringing us to zero waste?
No.
I can answer that one.
No. Counselor Hong, you want to give it a try?
Yeah. Zero waste is the regional district operations. We did punt it to the regional district. I thought we were getting a business plan. We didn't. So we did spend tens of thousands of dollars, like I said, to create a plan to operate, to build, not to operate, to build and finance the facility. They just didn't take it that step, because they said it would cost tens and more, tens of thousands of dollars, to get that plan, and lot more time than we told them to, to get an answer back to us. So that's that question. With regards to that money we get from Recycle BC, it goes exactly for recycling. But when recycling commodities become less, and you can't get any money for it, it affects everybody, city, private, and the NRE, because they can't get rid of the stuff, or they can't make any money on it. So if our revenue goes up, everybody will do good. If our revenue goes down and costs go up, everybody will be affected just the same. So that's how they're impacted. And we don't have any of those numbers to see on, you know, case by case, you know, what ifs. So, and that's what we're looking for. So when I meant that comment, that it does affect it, it affects everybody when Recycle BC changes the plan. So if China doesn't take our paper, like they did out east, what are you going to do with it? They're going to ask us and say, well, can we bury it in the dump? Because we got whatever how many tons and bales they got stacked in warehouses, and they don't have anything to do with it. So that's where I got to that point where Recycle BC makes the rules, and they change them on a regular basis. Thank you.
My next question is, do we have any idea what would happen to the, to the soiling of our recycling materials at the curbside if the NRE stops existing? Do we have any idea how much it would cost the city in products going into the yellow bag or into the new bins if we do not have the Nanaimo Recycling Exchange?
What products are you referring to?
The products that are currently accepted by the NRE but not accepted at the curbside.
Well, this is what I would have loved to have seen, on how much the NRE got for that, and how much they took of that material, which is one, something that we would like to have seen, each individual item, like, they said they took this many tons. They either disposed of it, or recycled it for this cost. And then our staff could have put those numbers together and said, you know what, if we had to do this, the NRE diverted this much, and we had to do this, it would cost us this much, but we didn't have those. And that's what a business plan would have done. And that's what I was trying to get at, is we didn't have that information to make a decision. I would like to know that exact same question. And how much would it cost for us just to leave everything at the curb? That's the most convenient way possible. Maybe we should build a sort line, be our own recycling, and get a contract from Recycle BC. I don't know. Maybe that's cheaper for us to do that. But we can't have that discussion until we have the information. That's what we're trying to get. Thank you.
Are you aware that, that the regional district of Couchin pays exactly double for their waste management to the regional district in Nanaimo? And they do all of, they take care of all of their, all of the recycling and garbage disposal. So I think it's fair to say that when, and I, I'm all for unions, but when we pay union wages and we pay the going cost, rather than what a recycling and nonprofit center can do, that we are saving a huge amount of money. a huge amount of money. And so when it comes time to the business plan, I'm wondering if we've really looked at what it is that they are saving us, and how much they are saving the landfill from filling up from things like Star from that fill it up very quick. It's not very, not very heavy, but it fills it up very quick. And have we looked at the costs of what it's going to cost us to build an incinerator, which is usually about four times the price of landfill? Have we looked at truly the costs of what the NRE is doing for us today? Do we know how much they saved us? No, we don't. Is it worth a few dollars on our tax bill? I think that the city is saying yes. So I would implore you to look at all of those costs when you're costing out the NRE. Thank you.